The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The July twenty-six, twenty-two meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a pitch form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than nine-ten A.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District One. Here. Mr. Don Browning, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Ms. Lauren DeBick, Director of Community Engagement, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I would like to introduce to you today our friend named Aiden, who has been in kindergarten kickstart, and the team who will be talking about what has happened over these past few months at summer and all of the exciting things that they have done. So if you want to come on up for the inspiration and pledge?
Good morning. Some things that I want to say about our kindergarten kickstart is that it was a very short week with a great group of kids. First off, I did notice that they needed some help with walking in line, but Aiden here did really, really well. And whenever I got down and I sat down with everybody and I got to know them, they were a very great group of kids. They were very smart. The kids that actually came from Reddick Collier were able to read simple sentences like "the cat is big" and "the cat is red" with no problem. It was actually very surprising. Even Aiden was reading the sentences like really well. It was like mind-blowing for me. We had one from Fesidet, and he did really well, too. He was almost trying to read the words, so that was great. And then we had two students who haven't been in school ever. They are working at home with their parents on their letters and their numbers, and they're actually doing pretty good, too. So we had a very fun week. And this is Aiden Daniels. He is from Reddick Collier, and he's going to say the pledge with us. So can you please stand?
Good evening. My name is Aiden Keith Daniels. I'm five years old. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, 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 wait.
Great job, Aiden.
Come back, Aiden. Come back, Aiden. Come back, Aiden. Come back, Aiden. Listen, I want to commend you, young man. Aiden, Aiden, I was just talking to him a few minutes ago. He reminds me of me. He looks like me when I was that age. I was about that size and everything, same, same head shape and everything, but I know Aiden's grandmother, she's an AP for us, Ms. Newman's, and I know his grandfather. Great musical family and everything, so it doesn't surprise me that Aiden is leading the class because he comes from a family of leaders. So, Aiden, keep doing what you're doing, keep being a good student, and keep saying the pledge. And, and thank you for telling us your whole name. Aiden Keith Daniels. Thank you.
Give him a round of applause.
Yes, we do. Superintendent, oh, I'm sorry. We still got Ms. Ms. Living, Dr. Livinggood.
Yes. Good morning, Dr. Gullett, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Ms. King, Ms. Thrower, Mr. Browning, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. I'm here today to spotlight two of our curricular opportunities that we offer to high school students. The Cambridge ACE and International Back Laureate Programs are international diploma programs. We currently offer the Cambridge ACE curriculum at all seven high schools, with Bellevue and North Marion's High School having full diploma programs, and Vanguard High School in Lake Weir having the full IB diploma programs. Today, I have students from three schools here to talk with you today about their respective schools and programs. But before I do, here is some background information on these wonderful opportunities for our students. In each case, the students receive an excellent education opportunity that extends beyond the typical graduation requirements. Students who complete these programs have an opportunity to earn scholarships and college credit. Both the Cambridge ACE and IB programs, students sit for examinations that are broad-based with multiple options for students to show their knowledge. These programs do not rely on a single test day or multiple-choice assessment, instead focusing on allowing the students to exhibit their knowledge and understanding through written assessments, projects, portfolios, and lab practicals. Both pride themselves on the ability to transform student outcomes and provide equity and access for all students. Studies by both organizations have shown that their students are highly sought after, and ultimately prepare students for the post-secondary success, ultimately outperforming their peers, both in terms of graduating on time in four years from college and in terms of subsequent course success. Our students, families, schools, and teachers all benefit from these programs as they provide additional pathways for students to earn the Florida Bright Futures Academic Scholar Award, which is full in-state tuition, and up to forty-five college credits for the Cambridge AS and A-level or IB, SL, and HL exams that they take and pass. Schools benefit by earning the weighted FTE dollars as well as points toward their school grade in the college and career readiness category. Teachers also benefit as they earn bonuses for each exam passed from students in their own classrooms. I would now like to introduce our three guests that were all recommended by their school principal to speak. We will start with our student representative from Bellevue High School, Jake Brewer. After Jake shares, Vanguard High School, Sophie Reed will share, and Adrian Asensio from North Marion High School will close us out with his final statements.
Good morning. As Dr. Livinggood said, I am Jacob Brewer from Bellevue High School, and I'm here to represent the Cambridge ACE program. As she has stated, the Cambridge ACE program provides a full Bright Futures Scholarship just by getting the ACE diploma. This is required by getting all, by getting seven courses passed in, in certain categories in the ACE diploma. One is in math, science, one in history, and one in English, and then the other four in any areas you want. This leads into the amount of flexibility that you can have in the Cambridge ACE program. You're not required to take certain classes. You get to pick and choose the courses that best suit your future. Personally, I will never take the ACE Biology class, but the ACE Physics and ACE Chemistry class suit what I would like to do in the future and prepare me better for college. The Cambridge ACE class also requires courses such as Thinking Skills, General Paper, and Global Perspectives. These classes directly prepare you for your future in college by giving you skills such as writing, critical thinking, independent thought, and just all in all prepares you for success by the direct work you must do in each class to pass each test and succeed in the course. Thinking Skills directly prepares you for your problem-solving and identification abilities. General Paper and Global Perspective prepare you for thinking outside the box and writing an analytical paper that can be understood by your peers and proves your point in a valid argument. The flexibility of the Cambridge ACE schedule is also highly important because it does not take much time out of your day outside of the school, besides, of course, the homework and the, and we do summer reading. You're still able to experience things that the school has to offer, such as CTE courses. Personally, I have taken Mr. Tony's Advanced Manufacturing Course for all four years, including the upcoming year while I will be a senior. It also lets you do outside activities such as tennis, weightlifting, which is two sports that I personally am in. It also allows you to be in competitions such as HOSA Skills USA and Science Fair with ease of success because the courses prepare you for what will make you succeed in those competitions. The ACE program directly prepares you for everything you're going to need in your future life because the class, the courses are tailored to things you will have to use to succeed in college or competition or in a future career. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name's Sophie Reed. I'm a, going to be a senior at Vanguard High School in the IB program. The IB program is not just about knowing the answer to questions, it's all about the why. And we use this at Vanguard by doing written examinations, oral examinations, to really show that we can think through situations and understand the deeper meaning behind the questions we're being asked instead of just repeating facts we're taught. For example, this year, I'm taking a Theory of Knowledge class, which every senior in the IB program is required to take, and it's all about how we know what we know. And so I'm very excited to take that class because I, I love the thought process behind everything. I'm not just okay with that answer of, here's the answer, okay, but now we get the why. The IB program also has a lot of benefits, such as the classes we take all give you credit for college if you score at least a four out of seven on the examinations, and because every single class we take is IB, that means greater opportunity to earn college credit. So, for example, our IB math class, it's like our calculus class, we call it Analysis and Applications because IB's fancy. And we, if you get a seven on the examination, MIT from Massachusetts will give you, will give you credit for their advanced calculus class, which just shows the rigor involved in the class, in the coursework. And then Bright Futures, if you complete the IB diploma, meaning that you pass your examinations, you do the, your extended essay, which is a choice that you do between your junior and senior year about any topic you want. And that's super cool because you get to express what you're interested in. I'm writing a paper on the ethics within Ayn Rand's book, The Fountainhead, so I've been working on that. And Bright Futures, if you complete it, you get it one hundred percent even without an SAT, ACT score, or your community service requirements. So just by completing the program, you're already getting money to go to college in Florida. Personally, I, the rigor of the IB program and its, its prestige known around the nation has come clear to me because I just committed for volleyball to Amherst College in Massachusetts early, and my coach told me the admissions process and the admissions board told me that the reason why I was able to commit so early before anyone else in the school was because of the IB program and how it shows your preparedness for college and what's to come. The IB program is going to prepare me for college and for life beyond that because we aren't just the people that learn, we understand, and we want to become better thinkers and enquirers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Asensio. I'm seventeen, and I come from North Marion High. I did something a little different. I wrote something a little bit more personal, so I'd like to share with you guys. I have always been a big, big dreamer. I've always dreamed of the day I'd pack my bags and kiss my mom goodbye as I headed off to college with my chest held high, ready to face the challenges of the world. The only problem was that I had no plan. I think one of the greatest obstacles most people face in starting the chase of their dreams is actually getting started. How does one truly prepare for the twists and turns of life? How does one ensure that their path to success is the most optimal? How does one guarantee that their sacrifices will be made worthwhile in the end? The truth is, I never really figured it out. As a kid, I still hadn't developed my true aspiration and goals, but I knew in the direction in which I was headed. I knew that I wanted to get to college. I knew that students who graduated with the ACE diploma were guaranteed the Florida Bright Futures Scholarship, which in a sense meant free college. I knew the program wouldn't be easy, but I was willing to take a chance on this plan. Since the day I joined ACE, I was able to connect the classroom to the real world. I was able to understand the true beauty of learning. The program's rigorous, multi-level curriculum pushed me to my limits, but rewarded me so much more than anything I had ever experienced in school. Assessments require deep subject knowledge, conceptual understanding, and higher-order thinking skills, all of which encouraged me to truly get a strong grasp of the subject I was learning. The ACE program has acted as a catalyst, promoting engagement between me and the material at hand, and also making me a more well-rounded student. The program has encouraged high academic standards and has provided me with an ideal basis for study at the college and university level. I can confidently say that the ACE program at North Marion High has been one of the best forms of planning and preparing for the challenges I'll face in my conquest against the world. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Sophie, Adrian, Jacob, for coming out and this mor, this morning and sharing with us about the ACE program and the IB program. Your futures are bright, and keep doing what you're doing. I know your parents have to be, I know your parents. I guess Siri wanted to say something to you, too. But your futures are bright, guys, and just keep doing what you're doing. And I know your parents have to be extremely proud of you, as we are. So, thank you again.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
Yes. Before you all leave, if you would, just take a moment. So often, we process programs and large dollar amounts, that type of thing, and I'm really excited to hear this personal start into the educational process as adults. Is there anything in, in particular you could share with the community or your fellow classmates as to that moment, maybe a teacher or, or parent, or something that perhaps was a catalyst to, to kick you off?
So, as a child, I experienced quite a little bit of traumas with my family. You know, I didn't have the best childhood, but what like really stood out to me was that through learning, I was able to look at a different perspective to my troubles, and I was able to use it as something good and as inspiration. So I, I was interested in the mind because other kids I know just like, you know, shut down and are easy to turn to bad things in life, and I, I just kind of used school to help me move away from that and to use it as a good in my life.
For me, it wasn't majorly my personal life, but the teachers that I experienced throughout elementary school, middle school, and especially in ninth grade, kind of created the way that I think and act and can function in the classroom and outside the classroom. Specifically, my third, my kindergarten and third-grade teacher, Ms. O'Tailing, my fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Williams, my sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Anderson, and my ninth-grade through now teacher, I've had him every year, Mr. Lucido. Those four teachers really helped me become who I am. They've taught me how to think in better ways to, one, be quicker and better at all areas of education, and they kind of got me on the track of what I want to be in the future. They're the reasons that I want to go to college and that I want to have a more successful future because of how they taught me and how they were devoted to my education and how they helped me in all aspects of life.
Similar to Jacob, I also, the teachers throughout my life, throughout the Marion County Public School System have been amazing. I've been a public school kid ever since kindergarten, so I've had some great teachers. But more recently, one of the classes and kind of what drove me to want to learn more and start thinking about the situations behind the problems has been actually my math classroom this year. So I am a volleyball player, and I love volleyball, and I was actually given an opportunity to combine math and volleyball in my math class this year. We have something called an internal assessment where we have to choose a paper about something, and a lot of people in my math class chose physics problems and all this stuff, but I decided to look at the statistical analysis of height versus how successful you are in the volleyball program because my entire life, I've been told I'm too short. So I wanted to prove them wrong, and I did. So I got to show that to my coach, and I just, I think that being able to bridge together school and like one of my, one of the things I love has just been really cool, and the IB program has allowed me to do that.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Wow, excellent, excellent, inspirational.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Y'all have a great day. Rest of your summer, enjoy the rest of your summer, since we called y'all back to school early. Superintendent Dr. Gullett, I understand you'd like to introduce and recognize some staff.
I would. Good morning, Chair Cummings. Members of the board, great to see you this morning. And before I do that, I had an opportunity this morning to spend some time with Aiden and, and Jacob and Adrian and Sophie, and I can tell you that they are truly inspiring. They share their experiences with us and their goals, and so very impressive, but great character, all of them. And Aiden is quite an articulate young man. You didn't get to hear all of that, but an extensive vocabulary, very impressed, ray of sunshine. So, yes, I'm very excited this morning to introduce some of our new school leaders, and they will be leading these amazing students in the coming year. And so it's my pleasure to announce them, and as I announce their name, I'll give a little bit of background on each of them, I'll have them stand, starting with Sarah Dobbs, who you may remember is our 2014 Marion County Rookie Teacher of the Year and also was Assistant Principal of the Year. And so she is now going to be leading East Marion Elementary, did great work previously at Oak Crest, and also supported Vanguard, Fort McCoy, I think, and you got, you graduated from Vanguard, didn't you? Yes. So we welcome Sarah Dobbs. Michael Carter is going to be leading Fort King Middle, and he began his career in Marion County Public Schools as an agri-science teacher. And so he has served in elementary, middle, and high schools, all levels. He was formerly the Assistant Principal of Curriculum at North Marion High, and so we're excited he's going to be leading Fort King Middle School. We also have Renee Johnson, who is going to be leading Spar Elementary. And Ms. Johnson is a graduate from Lake Weir High School. She taught at Liberty Middle School, and she also worked, I think, you also taught at Westport High School and served as a dean, and spent some time at Evergreen Elementary most recently. And so she has been the AP at Spar, and so now will be leading that school as the principal. And then we also welcome Victoria Hunt, who is going to be leading Wyamina Park. Ms. Hunt has been working most recently in the district office in elementary curriculum instruction, digital learning. When I say district office, I don't mean sitting in the district office, our, our expectation, my expectation is they're in schools, helping support our schools, but worked to support our transformation office this past year and the schools and, and under that leadership. And so we're excited that she's taking all of her experiences and will be leading Wyamina Park. So, welcome to all of our new principals. I also have another member to introduce, Deb Riedel, is a few rows back. She's going to stand. Deb Riedel, as you may remember, was our principal here for the last several years. She was at Shady Hill and was also a principal at Stanton Weersdale before. She was also a Golden Apple teacher, I don't know if you all know that previously, and was formerly, obviously, a finalist for Teacher of the Year for our district. We're excited that she's taking all of that experience and some prior district-level experience and I think assessment and evaluation that you did some years back, and will be leading our elementary department. So all of that knowledge of instruction and curriculum assessment will come together, helping to support our elementary schools. So excited about all of these, you know, folks. We have great things ahead because of their leadership, so I want to thank all of them for being here today. We have a couple of others, and you'll see more at our next meeting. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all of you. I thought, I didn't get the chance to get to Ms. Riedel this morning, but congratulations, and, and we're just looking forward to the great work that you guys are going to do and keep moving this, moving this ship in the right direction. You guys are the ones that are going to have to give this district the momentum to go forward, so thank you, guys, and congratulations again.
Oh, no, yeah, congratulations. I'm, I've already started scheduling meetings. I'm excited, especially, I'm starting with District One, but any principal in the district currently knows that that was something that I've done, that I've spent a little bit of one-on-one time, and Ms. Riedel knows that because we, we did that. But, so I'll be reaching out to all of you, but I know I already have reached out to Ms. Hunt and will be talking really soon. Kudos to all of the work that you've put in already to get you to the point that you're at right now. I, I love that forward trajectory and looking forward to career expectations and what you're wanting to do and, and moving forward in your career and becoming principals is a wonderful opportunity for all of you, and now all of your peers can look up to you and, and just like you have looked up to your peers in the past. So kudos to all of you, looking really forward to getting to work with you.
And I'll just say, getting the right people in the right positions for the right reasons, including, I think, Ms. McAllister back there.
She's on the agenda, so she'll be here being recognized next meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. I saw her.
We won't forget her. We won't, we won't forget her, I promise.
Thank you so much, you guys, for, you know, building on the momentum, and it's, I've been saying this all around the district, and I'm just so excited for this school year. I'm so ready. It's, it's going to be great. So welcome, welcome aboard in all your new ways.
Yeah, I echo everything they said. Congratulations. I look forward to meeting with you, especially Ms. (laugh). I was like, I haven't been out there yet, but usually before the beginning, oh, I'll be there, I'll come and introduce myself and stuff so we can meet each other before real school starts. And then you're busy. So congratulations and best wishes in your, all of your endeavors because it's a challenge, and it's probably harder now than ever to be in the positions that you guys are in, but you're, you're leaders, and I look forward to seeing where you guys lead us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations again.
Yes, Chair. Yes, if I may, I, I would just like to second what has been said and, and to accent the personal challenge. and to accent the personal challenge that you all have accepted and responsibility to these students. Very exciting at this stage in your lives, your professional lives. Very exciting, big responsibility, wow, principal. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys, once again. Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for July 26, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the items C. 7.1, C. 8.1, C. 8.2, C. 8.3, C. 8.4, C. 9.1, C. 9.2, C. 10.1, C. 11.1, C. 13.1, C. 17.1, C. 19.1, C. 21.1, C. 21.2, and C. 22.3 that have been pulled for discussion.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve?
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 14, 2022, school board meeting?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thoreau.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 16, 2022, administrative briefing and work session? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I'm ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board on this morning.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. Tonight's speakers will be called, this morning's speakers will be called, I'm sorry, prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and contact information, if you wish, for the record. Spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice on the monitor to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless notice is given 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martina Lopez, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers this morning, Chair.
A plus. May I have a motion to approve considering agenda items C. 7.1 through C. 22.3 with the exception of items C. 7.1, C. 8.1, C. 8.2, C. 8.3, C. 8.4, C. 9.1, C. 9.2, C. 10.1, C. 11.1, C. 13.1, C. 17.1, C. 19.1, C. 21.1, C. 21.2, and C. 22.3 that have been pulled for discussion? May I have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass you unanimously. May I have a motion to approve independent contract agreements for speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and sign language therapists?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled item C. 7.1. Would you have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Very, very exciting opportunity this morning to watch the actual process, the chain of command, and how things transpire through the district. Pretty darn exciting, especially with the, with the new principals and the new, and the students achieving. The, I pulled item C. 7.1. First of all, because it really does help us, I think, each one of these items that comes forward in our meetings, it helps us to understand our mission and what we do from a cost and from a revenue point of view, probably more, well, not probably, more importantly, our educational mission. This is an individual education plan, and it's a quarter of a million dollars. Very exciting to me. It's well over the local governmental limit on, on items being put in a consent agenda. And the items, often we speak to things as a, as initials, a FEEP or a FAPE or a FOP. And really, they really have legs, they really have merit, especially when you're spending a quarter of a million dollars for something. So I find it a great opportunity. This is a student's educational plan. It's, it does have initials, but it is, it's the essence of what we do. Over 3,000 students, seems like an awful lot of money to me. We do need to look into this, and I'm very interested to hear any thoughts from the, from the board or the superintendent, especially as it relates to communication, which is what this is at the heart of, is communication. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? Are we ready to vote, or any board members? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve grant application for summer learning camps?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled this item for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and this is in partnership with the Department of Education and our, our wonderful leaders up in legislature and our governor up in Tallahassee, Department of Education. A million dollars. This will be, this will be, it's an application for next year, but next year will come. And revenue, one person's revenue is another person's cost. I am a businessman. I look at, at costs, especially when you're spending someone else's money. And this application for a million dollars really needs to be applied. Number one, we need to get it. And I would like to see, every time something like this comes up, it only takes a moment, less than I take even introducing it. Our chain of command, our leaders, the people that are here in the building with us today, I would just like to know, in a short, maybe 30 seconds, one minute, why this matters, why this million dollars matters? Because it really does matter. It's exciting. We're just ending summer. I think summer, it was a time, as a student, I was not excited about going to school and was cleverly able to dodge that. But others do benefit from summer. And this is a million dollars, so I wanted to bring that forward so that the community would be aware of the grandiose nature of every million dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve grant application Title I, Part A, Improving Basic Programs Operated by Local Educational Agencies, 2022, 2023?
Still move?
Moved by Mr. Browning. Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Mr. Browning, you pulled this one for discussion?
Yes, I did, thank you, Chair. Yes, okay, so we're right in the heart of it here. And it's, it's really why we're here. Department of Education, Manny Diaz, the governor, Baxley, Senator Baxley, our senior, Senator along with Senator Perry, Representative McLean and Harding. How exciting to help with low income and, if I could have a drumroll, 16 million dollar application. This is at the heart of what we do. 16 million dollars can never, ever go, whether it's my company or it's a board that I sit on, can't go into a non-discussion container to be voted on in bulk. Just can't happen. This goes back to 19, to 2018. We've been successful right along. We have the supportive DOE. It's really a team effort, and I would love to see, perhaps our superintendent will take a moment just to indicate just how important this is because it covers all of our schools, all 50 public schools. 16, almost 17 million dollars. So that was the reason that I brought it forward. It is, it improves our basic programs. It's a fundamental fund, funding source. So thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
So just for the record, it does not cover all of our schools. We did have three schools that were not classified as Title I, and I believe this year we only have two schools that are not classified as Title I. So nearly every school in the district, but not all schools in the district are classified as Title I. I have had conversation with Dr. Reese about this specific application. Also spoke with Ms. Talbot Irving at length about it. And I actually have some detail specific that potentially will answer some of Mr. Browning's, not really questions, just wanting further information. The area of focus one deals with student achievement, strengthening data, strengthening differentiated instruction, strengthening post-secondary opportunities and partnerships in families. Then the focus area two is again on parent and family engagement. Then we have an area specific to homeless education, education for our students that are classified as homeless. We have those other areas, early childhood, there's even a section for private schools in here, transportation, foster care. So there are lots of different areas that we do utilize this 16 million dollars for Title I funds. We, as a district, do have a significant population of students that are in that free and reduced lunch category of financial insecurity, frankly. And so because of the vast population of students, we do have the eligibility to apply for something like this Title I grant. It is important for our district, and it is imperative that we have this, these resources. And so thus the justification behind applying for these funds and then the use that is spelled out in the entire application that is available to the public on board docs right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Also, I just want to add one more thing onto yours. In addition to it, dealing with our public school, it also funds three charter schools and 13 private schools as well. So this is much, much more than, than, than is, was explained. So we ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application Title I, Part D, Subpart II, Prevention and Intervention Programs for Children and Youth Who Are Neglected, Delinquent, or At Risk? May I have a motion?
Still move?
Move by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull this as well?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, wow, and I appreciate the discussion on the previous 16 million dollars. That is exactly my goal in dedicating the time and energy to helping the district focus on, on our, on our mission of education. This, again, is well over the $100,000 limit. $379,000, a grant application Title I, and it's our most at-risk students, neglected, at-risk, have been identified in some regard as in, in need of special care, special treatments, perhaps intervention. And it's very exciting to me. We come from a very prosperous area, but there are certainly those that are at risk. So this is nearing $400,000. And once you get to 400, you can get to a half million. So very exciting, and I'm assuming that we have some great stories to tell of the utilization of these funds. They go back to 2018. So it's just a, it's heartwarming that when we do have a special need, an at-risk situation, we've got the resources, and they come from the Department of Education and the governor and the legislature. And you just can't say enough for our system and how the community is able to direct us in our efforts to educate to the extent we do. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Posts have the same signs. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application for Anita M. Lowey, 21st Century Community Learning Centers? May I have a motion?
Still move?
Moved by Mr. Browning, seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled this item for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and here we are, million dollars, million dollars plus, $1,125,000. Very exciting, we have a, okay, I guess we're working all right. A professional, this goes back to 2017, this grant application. And they go through, and boy, they just fly through so easy. And I think it's important that we, that we have, we've got the people here, we've got the talent, the chain of commands. I would like to, I would like to know how we implement these so that everyone hears a discussion, an ongoing discussion as to the professionalism of the way we deal with a million dollars as we, as we do our job, especially going back to 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. It becomes so routine just to have money fly through the system. Thank you, Chair.
Are we ready to vote? Ms. Thoreau?
Thank you, Chair. Just to, for my own clarification, these different grant applications, do they- Just to, for my own clarification, these different grant applications, do they come from the state or the federal level?
I think both.
My understanding from when I reviewed all of these, and it's why I didn't have any questions or reasons to pull it, is that they're federal program applications, Title I, and we have to be professional in how we do these applications because of all of the requirements. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement with the State of Florida Department of Health, Marion County Health Department?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, you pull this one as well for discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, especially, this is a, this is our health and wellness, three quarters of a million dollars, and it's so important at this time, as we've, as we've moved through the last few years, dealing with COVID. It's so critically important that we that we take time and look at how efficient or inefficient we have been. I was able to escape the COVID all the way up until recently, and I struggled with it. I'm not the youngest person on the on the board, and let me tell you, my heart goes out to everyone who has who has dealt with that COVID situation over the last several years. It is a big deal. It really does matter. We have a lot to be thankful for with our Department of Health, Marion County Department of Health, and I I I just think that even though now we're, maybe it's it's a little bit more gentle than it was a year or two ago, it certainly is very real, and we have to, we have to pay attention because we pull everyone together into closed rooms, and we have, we have a lot of opportunity, I think, to do the right thing. This is three quarters of a million dollars, COVID, it's right, right in my focus at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Board Member Campbell.
Mr. Browning, thank you for pulling this item. First of all, I want to say, Mr. McGowan and Ms. Simmons do an amazing job working in health in in our community, in our schools. I I had some conversation with Mr. McGowan. This wasn't an item I was going to pull, but since it's on the table, I'm going to go in public, mentioning some conversation I had with him. This is a significant increase that the Department of Health has put in this agreement, and I'm going to go on the record that I believe that it's time for us to start pursuing having our own school-based employees that are providing healthcare services in our schools. While I certainly appreciate the arrangement that we have with the Department of Health, I believe that it's time for us to start pursuing what that would look like for us to, whether it's supplemental or whatever that looks like. This is a large sum of money. It does not include a healthcare professional on every campus. It barely covers anything close to that. For this significant amount of money, I think that we might be able to pursue alternative options, even looking to see, yes, I understand that this agreement extends to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, is what this says, but there is also thirty-day-out clauses and things like that in the contract. I haven't had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Gullett about these concerns, as I was intending to do, just scheduling has not allowed that, but I'm I'm going on the record publicly that I think it's time for us to start pursuing that. I'm grateful for the work that we do with the Health Department. I'm grateful that we have them as a partner, while we don't have our own school-based employees to provide this for us. But if if COVID was any example, actually having our own employees with our own children on a regular basis who could provide healthcare services, I think, would just further enhance what we'd be able to do in this in this department, in this area. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thor.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, and I can't say I just agree with you on a lot of your points, and primarily because we have kids that come to school every day with a myriad of of health issues, and it is true that not every school has a registered nurse or highly qualified health professional. They they do the best that they can, and thank goodness for the partnership that we have with our local Health Department, because we were certainly able to lead together with with their support to keep our schools open, each and every one of them, throughout what we've had to deal with the last couple of years. But since we're self-funded now, it does open to all kinds of innovative ways to deliver the best healthcare support we can give to our students and our staff, frankly, while they're with us during the the school day. I love the idea that other counties have have done, and it's something we've talked about as a board, having, looking into the possibility of an employee health clinic and those types of things. So thank you for for what you shared.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just need more information, because I just want to make sure that we are focused on our education. I, that's, you know, when we start branching out into nursing and I started out as a place and stuff, I feel like, I don't know. So I just need more information before I agree to anything like that, the financials, the responsibilities, like, a lot, because as a board, I still would like to see us focused on academics and master that before we're trying to become doctors and nurses and the other, but that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Agreement with Ocalo Consulting and Prevention LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, you pull this one for discussion.
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is nine point two.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, nine point, Chair, is this nine?
Yes, sir.
Yes, nine point two. Thank you. Thank you, yes. Again, over, well over the limit at a half million dollars, four hundred and, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mental health is critically important. We just need to talk about these things, and I'm thinking thirty minute, thirty seconds to a minute, and then expand on that with the board so that we have a, like a professional evaluation of these individual dollar amounts that are spent. Mental health is just critically important to what we do. Some of the documents that have come forward indicate that we're, we've got twenty-five percent that in some regard are addressed in a in a mental health situation. So again, I'd like to see this type of item never go into a consent agenda and always come forward for the latest and greatest accomplishments and what we've actually done with this close to a half million dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve 2023-2026 English Language Learners ELL Plan?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, you pull for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. English Language Learners, it's critically important as we, as we move into into this century, that we, that we give everyone a great kickstart. Language-wise, it has so much to do with education. If you're falling behind with 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 your language skills, it's easy to see how you can fall behind academically and perhaps in life. I would like to see a, I'm working on a program, a professional evaluation committee, to to address items just like this, so that we can, we can evaluate, we can learn, we can, we can gauge our accomplishments and accentuate those, and anything that doesn't tend to work, we can reduce that activity. So this is a general fund item, and we last looked at it twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen. So I think that something like this must be dealt with on a regular basis. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve, schedule a public hearing to approve provisions for the 2022-2023 Code of Student Conduct at the August ninth, 2022 Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull this as well for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, critically important. It's come to my attention in in dealing with these in in my calls that I receive from the from the community. We, we, code of conduct must be fair. It must be exemplary in terms of lady liberty, of justice, and never loaded against one party versus another, or one class of individuals versus another, as in young versus, students versus older faculty. The idea that we deal with forty thousand referrals, to me, indicates a real need to to target the system. Not that everybody isn't trying hard and and working, but we, our our students are our greatest treasure. They come to us with a backpack seventeen thousand dollars, and our trust, they trust the parents and the community trusts that we get the job done. A code of conduct, which I have come to believe is very lacking in defense of the individuals that are under that code, and very heavy in prosecutorial implications of that code. We don't run a juvenile detention center, and I'm not even implying that we do, but forty-four thousand, I want to see that number reduced in the next five years to two thousand, two thousand. I mean, think about it a minute, the number of referrals. It's almost like we're running a juvenile detention center systemically. Now, this is not meant to be critical of any individual or group of individuals, staff. We've just got to look at this, and when we, when we do have the public hearing, I think we have to, we have to delve down into this code of conduct, at least with 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 a different gaze or understanding than I had in the past. I was perhaps a bit naive, thinking that everything was was fair and and that everyone was represented equally. Now I do not harbor that opinion. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Campbell.
I, while I wasn't intending to have this discussion at this juncture, because all we're doing with this agenda item is to actually schedule the public hearing, I am looking forward to the public hearing. This fifty-eight-page document does have some items in it that I have not completely read everything that we've changed yet, because I know the public hearing is coming, but I I'm looking forward to having that discussion and encourage the public, and and Mr. Browning included, to come with specific examples of things that need to be altered or corrected or specific examples of things that are perfect or should be reworded, or whatever the the thought process is behind that. The one thing I do like about how the student code of contact is laid out is it explains under each category what the student responsibility is, and then what the students' rights are, students' and/or parents' rights, and then it says what students must not do. So while it may look as if it's on a punitive nature, at least the way it's laid out, it explains, here are your responsibilities, and students who are of any age often need to know what they're responsible to do and responsible for, and often that's a kind way of of putting them in a corrective line. And just as we heard this morning in our kindergarten kickstart, many of those students didn't know how to stand in line, and so that's part of what this is is about, is is getting things in line. So student responsibilities and then student rights are how this is laid out with additional information there, whenever there might be things that students must not do. But I, too, am going to be looking through this before our public hearing and seeing if there are opportunities for us to potentially alter it. I'm grateful for the committee that put in so much work to get to this point, but we as board members see it whenever the public sees it, if we're not a part of the committee work. So that's what I'll be doing for the public hearing myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
While you're just talking about that, I would just note, I spoke to Dr. Livinggood about that yesterday, because I wanted to compare what it looked like now, and she has a nice document that she, I don't know if she sent it to you guys or not, but I would maybe kindly request that if she could just send that to everyone so that you guys can...
Dr. Livinggood, if she's here, can hear us, just, just, I see her right there. You don't have to come up. You just forward it to all the board members.
Forward it so they can see.
The comparison, there's a comparison.
Yeah, I guess, just a better idea, because as a board member, I like to see when, what has been changed, altered, added, you know, so we can kind of grab our attention, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Livinggood.
Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Forrest High School Scholarship?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, you pull this for the discussion.
Yes, really neat opportunity here. University of Florida, Lauren Manna, Forrest High School, congratulations on on winning this scholarship. While it's not enormous, it probably is going to be enormous in the student's life, and congratulations to our our principal, Elizabeth Brown, at Forrest High. This is just exciting. The University of Florida, we have, sometimes we take for granted tremendous academic resources we have in our triangle here in central Florida, and Tampa, Gainesville, and Orlando, and this is, this is just exciting, so congratulations, Ms. Manna and Principal Brown. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
While I am grateful for us to have the opportunity to approve this at this juncture, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that our new policies through Neola that we just approved would give us the opportunity to acknowledge this, but I don't know that we actually have to approve these in the future.
I concur.
So I...
That is discretionary within the board. It is not something that that needs the board approval, so if if the board wishes to continue to have them brought to meetings and and, you know, give an opportunity to discuss, you may, but it's not a, it's not a, something that is required.
Didn't we put a threshold on this?
I don't think we have to approve scholarships at all anymore, based on, I I tried to do a search in Neola yesterday, and I didn't see anything that we have to approve from the scholarship standpoint.
It was just processed. Okay, so, yeah, we don't even have to have these anymore.
Right.
But certainly, this one was already in the process.
Right.
Got you. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 All opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve, approval of the data share agreement between the College Board and Corp. and the School Board of Marion County, Florida, for the purchase of advanced placement exams?
No, ma'am.
Moved by Board Member King, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this one for discussion as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Critically important, six hundred thousand dollars. So we've got to, we've just got to, we've got to set a, a limit, and we've got to recognize and, and show the dignity to these, to these dollars. This is advan, advanced placement exams. You don't have to pass it. I'm not that overly familiar with it, but it is helpful, but it's an awful lot of money. We seem to be bulging with money. And when a half a million dollars can just slide through without discussion, it, it, something, something is up. Something is wrong. There's a dignity to cost, there's a dignity to revenue. What becomes one person's cost, one institution's cost, becomes the next institution's revenue, and that's commerce. So six hundred thousand dollars, I'd, I'd like to know our benefit coming out of this. I think it's pretty transparent and pretty available, pretty obvious, but we, we must, we're, we're in this business. We're educational people, and every half a million dollars, half a million dollars really matters. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Campbell?
Chair, thank you. This particular agenda item is interesting to me in light of the individuals that we heard from, that are students this morning. While they were coming from ACE program and IB program, I'll put AP program and AP classes right in that same category. While we are spending money here, it does cost money for these advanced programs that our students are having the privilege and benefit and opportunity to participate in. So yes, this is a six hundred thousand dollar expense. However, also in this item is if these students score a three or higher on these advanced placement exams, then the school district receives money back. So while there is an expense, certainly to having these tests available, there also is revenue that's generated from students who pass these exams, and the rigor and the opportunities that these students have, as we heard from three students today, we heard from the benefits that they have exhibited in their own lives because of the rigor that they've had in their coursework, and that's exactly what this item is for, and I am all in favor for us providing whatever it's going to take for students to have that rigorous education that they need, especially in turn if the school district does receive revenue from the opportunities that they have. Thank you.
Very well said.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with TPG Cultural Exchange Services LLC?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Brown, you pull this one for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Absolutely, yes. Domestic teachers, I'm all in favor of advancing our domestic teachers to the extent humanly possible. We must pay our teachers the highest level that's achieved in our educational process. Granted, it's traditional on an administrative level to increase salaries, sometimes double what a teacher might make. However, in order to achieve that, I would like to advance the teachers. Teachers are the key, and domestic teachers are certainly our great treasure. If we, if we're having trouble getting teachers, we're not addressing the needs, the revenue side for the teachers to the extent I believe we, we are able. This is over a quarter of a million dollars that we spend on outside, foreign recruitment of teachers. I would just like it all to be spent, I see these go through, I see that it has gone through 2019, 2020, 2021, and here we are, 2022. So these things can't be routine. We must support our teachers, our domestic teachers. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair Campbell.
So I understand the concern, however, with more than a hundred fifty teacher vacancies right now, I am all in favor of us filling any of those vacancies with teachers, as opposed to having substitutes that may not have an educational background. We have heard from, in years past, the teachers with TPG that have come through, and the wonderful opportunities that it provides for our students to be under their leadership and instruction. The well-roundedness that they bring and, and can provide in a classroom is unmatched in some ways. There, there are just things, students that may never be able to leave Marion County, Florida, may have a teacher from another part of the world that can come and open their eyes to things that they've never seen before. Certainly, I am all for us filling as many vacancies as we possibly can with as many teachers that potentially were even raised right here in Marion County. But the reality is, we have more vacancies across the country right now than we have teachers to fill them. We have universities that are closing their education programs because we do not have students going into the field. How we reverse that, I'm not sure yet. We need to fix it. In the interim, this is a solution, because we do have others from other parts of the world that are interested in coming here and teaching. And so that's the justification behind this cultural exchange. And again, all in favor for ensuring we have filled as many of our teacher vacancies as humanly possible before we start the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Ms. Thora?
Just a couple of quick points. Yes, the, the whole country is having trouble getting teachers with very few local, localized areas as exceptions. It's gotten so difficult to recruit and, well, I'll just start with recruit, because you have to get them here before you can retain them, that we're now looking at having veterans join us and, and their spouses. And so there's all kinds of creative ideas, innovative ideas, to try to draw more people into the field of education. And yes, pay really does matter, but we saw for ourselves in, in this district that sometimes even pay isn't enough. A big part of it, I would say fifty-fifty, is the, the type of, of culture that is, that each and every district creates through its leadership and on down the line. And that's what makes people want to keep coming to work every day. They'll, they'll learn a little less knowing that they're well-supported, that the atmosphere is conducive to making continued progress. I, I didn't pull this because I'm comfortable, in this day and age, when you can communicate with anybody, even just online gaming, from, from other countries in a split second, to have the opportunity to learn from people that are different than yourself. You know, it, it all makes perfect sense when you exist in your own echo chamber, but, but the world is, has gotten very big and is moving very fast. So I definitely see the value of expanding as much as we can to bring qualified, certified teachers into our realm and, and supporting them, and also continuing to bolster our pay scale to ensure that pay is not a barrier. And while it is a common misnomer that Marion County is, public schools is top-heavy in their administration, there's a wonderful graph in our budget that shows just the opposite. Doing more with less is something that we've done at the administrative level for a very long time, and, and I would share as, as a former classroom educator, that when you have people in the classroom that are really good at what they do, and you keep them and you support them, there becomes less and less of a need for, for more layers of, of support. They just want to be able to, to teach and, and work with children each and every day. You know, that's their passion. So that's what I have to say about this, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Thora. I, I think this, this is a wonderful agreement for this district. We have the opportunity to fill some vacancies with some qualified teachers, qualified, and it, it benefits the teachers because they get the opportunity to come and teach in this country, but it benefits our students because they have the opportunity to be exposed to a different culture, or different, different ideas, a different, this is a different environment that these teachers come from. So I, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful program. I, I, no need to pull it, we can just celebrate it. So I'm ready to vote as well. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve agreement for police special duty officers with City of Ocala Police Department?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Camp, Camp, Campbell, not Cummings. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled ILC twenty-one point one.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is, we have one follow-up as well with the Sheriff's Department, this is Ocala Police Department, and every item that relates to our, the safety and to the chain of command of our safety endeavors needs to be brought forward and acknowledged, especially the professionals in the Ocala Police Department who are under the direction, the responsibility constitutional, safety officer of our sheriff, Billy Woods. That's why I pulled this. We must discuss every item that comes forward that has to do with child safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for the city, not the county, for Sheriff Woods.
Yes.
This is, that's correct. This is for Marion, for the City of Ocala.
This is standard that we do every year. It just states for the record what those officers, for instance, the officers that come to these meetings, have sent in for these meetings, what we, the rate, the special rate that we pay them. So this is a standard meeting. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement for special detail with the Marion County Sheriff's Office?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora, seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, you pull this one as well. It's pretty much a follow-up to the same one you just got to talk about.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, this is Sheriff Billy Woods. We get a big thumbs up from the sheriff on this, and while we have the right to even develop our own organization within the school district, the sheriff, Marion County Sheriff, Billy Woods, is our primary safety officer constitutionally, and I'm so excited to have him present in the, in the county as a head of the Sheriff's Department. And I've asked the superintendent to bring forward a workshop to address the many issues that are so important. This particular one is just a great segue into it because it has to do with the special, special uniform officers when they're brought forward, and the costs, and boy, does he handle costs beautifully. I'm so impressed from a businessman's point of view and a safety point of view. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
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 May I have a motion to approve revised school bill times for 2022-2023 fiscal year?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this as well.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so here we have it, it's a notice, new starting times, we're starting, going into a new year. That's what we do for a living. It's, it's 2022, new times, everybody check your times. There's been a lot of effort put into reducing congestion and issues associated with schools in close proximity to each other. So be on the lookout, new times are coming. They're not, they're not enormous changes in time, but it is something that's out there, and it will kick off the new year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash returnable donation to have a total value of thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars. Student backpacks and supplies valued at twenty thousand, six hundred one dollars to Bellevue, Santos Elementary School, College Park Elementary School, N H Jones Elementary School, Donnell Elementary School, A Street Elementary School, Fort McCoy School, Hammont Bourne Elementary School, Harborview Elementary School, Hillcrest School, Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks Legacy Elementary School, Maplewood Elementary School, Marion Oaks Elementary School, Oak Crest Elementary School, Reddy Collier Elementary School, Romeo Elementary School, Shady Hill Elementary School, South Ocala Elementary School, Spar Elementary School, and Stan Wearsley Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council and Corp. Golf cart valued at three thousand dollars to Magister Street Academy for Magister Street Academy PTA. Billbird advertisement valued at one thousand dollars to the Marion County Public Schools from the Mar Advertising Company of Ocala, Florida. Twenty-one student desk valued at three thousand, one hundred fifty dollars to Marion County Public Schools Department of Operations and Emergency Management from Gulf Coast Elementary Charter School. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from the Spion Relief Fund. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Westport High School from their business partner, HCA Florida, Ocala Hospital via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. Vice Chair Campbell, can you thank the folk?
Absolutely. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to show our gratitude for the wonderful resources that have been provided to us. Special thanks, I, I know each one of these means so much, but special thanks to Colonel Hamm and to Ms. McGuire, working with the Marion County Veterans Council and all that they've done on these student backpacks. I know that that has taken many different shape, I've seen an example of a backpack, I think they delivered a certain number of them to every one of these schools, and they have some extras as well. Each one of these donations is so important, obviously business partners and, and golf carts, and we'll take tangible, intangible, we'll take whatever you have that you want to give to our schools. We are very, very grateful for that support that comes from our community, and so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for giving, doing that, Ms. Campbell, and we, we always thank Colonel Hamm because he, he really loves doing this, and I saw him last school term at Howard. He, he had his truck loaded up with these, these backpacks, and he just enjoys making sure the kids have what they need to have for school with these backpacks and the veterans. So we really appreciate them, and thank you. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on the following date, August fourth, 2022, at nine a.m.
Reverend Cummings, if I may...
Yes, sir.
If, if I may, I believe at this point, we currently do not have anything scheduled on the August fourth date for work session item. Also, that is the date of a, a training session for SRO personnel, and Mr. McFadden, myself, and Tim McCourt, Sheriff's Attorney. Attorney, will likely be presenting, um, together on that, those issues. So, uh, we would like to, with the permission of the Superintendent and the Board, cancel that date since there will be nothing that is set for that date. And as to any future dates that we may have for a work session with Mr. McFadden, we would set that up at the next available date or as a special work session.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Green was requesting a, was going to request a shade meeting for that date. Am I right, Mr. Green? At what time?
Right after the work session.
So, there being no work session?
Do it early and just get it done.
Yeah. What time is your training?
It's an all-day training. I can, I can show up to the training later so that I'm present for the session.
So, can we do the shade session that morning?
Yes, sir. Earlier the better for my schedule.
So, instead of us having a nine o'clock administrative briefing and work session, we just do a nine o'clock shade session? Vice Chair Campbell?
And I, I just had a question regarding, um, looking in the budget binder that we received, there was a, a work session that we canceled last week, um, that was listed as when we were receiving the five-year work plan. And so, I just didn't know when that was happening, if it wasn't on that one. And it's not on that, uh, the August 4th one either. So, I'm, and I didn't call Ms. Dobbins to ask, so I'm sorry, but I was, I just didn't know when we were receiving the five-year work plan. If it's on an upcoming agenda. I know they've been working on it.
Give me a moment. I'll pull up my calendar.
No, that's fine. I, I know they've been working on it. I just, it, it's in the budget binder that we received as that date on the 21st. And then, we didn't have a work session that day. And then, we don't have anything on August 4th either. That's my only question. I've, I have no problem with rescheduling, um, shade session for the work session, et cetera.
So, are, do any of the board members have any conflict with us moving the work session, um, having the shade session that morning at nine o'clock?
No, I don't have a conflict, but I am kind of curious with our district and our performance and everything, um, why we're not, why we're, you know, we did, we had a meeting canceled last week and then again on the 4th. So, as a board member, I'm kind of curious as to, we don't have important items for student outcomes or anything that should be addressed or looked at. And that's my only concern, but I'll do whatever the board.
And I'm feeling also too that the safety, um, workshop is really important to get scheduled and, and get put to rest, you know, what our plan is going to be and, and what we're doing. School starts, you know, August 10th. And as a board member, I want to be on the same page with the rest of the board as to what our direction is going to be and, and then move forward with it. So, yes, it seems like a, a time to, if we need to add meetings or different days, I'm totally open to that because I understand, you know, everyone, th- this is that time of year. But we, we have to hold our meetings, um, as a priority so that we can make sure we're getting answers out so that we can move forward on really important topics.
If they're productive meetings. I don't want us to be a board that just comes up here and rambles and gets in the way of our employees because they, it is that time of the year and they have so much to do. But I just want to make sure as a board member, I'm, you know, we're doing what we need to be doing to, um, you know, it's our due diligence for our students and our, our employees.
Right. Superintendent?
Um, thank you, Chair. Members of the Board, uh, August 18th is the date that the work plan is scheduled for. Do you answer your question?
Can we, is that, uh, the agenda big that day?
We have one other item. I think with the budget. Ms. Boston Ellis said, I think that was, um, last requested, one other item, correct? That's it. So, we can certainly accommodate on the 18th.
So, can we also add the, um, the work session that we talked about for, um, school security on that one as well?
And, and sir, uh, just for your information, I have not had an opportunity to confer on available dates with Mr. McFadden. So, uh, I would want to ensure that that's also, since he will be presenting the board and be here to respond some, just questions for the board. Uh, he, I see, note that he's in the audience, so.
And location as well.
Giving me the thumbs up. That's, that's the most communication I get out of him during a meeting. There you go.
Is, is this the work sessions that we're also talking about inviting the, the chiefs to join us? I know that that was, um, something that we were thinking about. And at, at least coming from my perspective, this is a, a community issue. You know, um, whatever happens in any school comes in from the community because that's where our kids and people come from, the community. So, I, this is just me personally. I'd feel a lot more comfortable. We have August 2nd, which is our public hearing on the tentative budget. Um, and I see that as being all there is in terms of an agenda. Is, is that correct? It's, I see it on my calendar for 5:15 on August 2nd. And if that's all we have, I'd like to put something else on there that's going to move us forward.
I would just need to ensure that we can advertise appropriately to do what we need to for that. Um, and Ms. Martinez Lopez, we can, you, do you have any?
I, 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 I do want to request that we, um, I know we're talking about doing the, um, school security, um, meeting. I would respectfully ask this board that we wait till after, um, 23rd.
After August 23rd?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have a request in for, uh, for the workshop with, uh, with Sheriff Billy Woods.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah. I'd rather have two rather than, than push them off, uh, because especially if things need to, uh, uh, need to, um.
I will, whatever the pleasure of the board is, that was, that's my, that's Eric Cummings' request. We can go before if you want, if we want.
As, as long as it's, uh, from this board member's perspective, as long as we address, uh, uh, when we have these available individuals, uh, like, like Sheriff Billy Woods, uh, I want to take advantage of that.
So, I want to give Mr. McFadden the ample opportunity.
And.
Prepare.
Right. And I, I will say, this is, uh, in response to the, the board, uh, you know, that, the, a request for a work session on these issues. So, um, what happens and who is called and all that will be, you know, primarily up to the board. However, if there's a, uh, if there's something that we are presenting from a staff perspective, Mr. McFadden and, and to some degree myself would be able to help present the issues that you need to deal with. Now, uh, if it is also your request that there be involvement by other law enforcement agencies, I just want to ensure that we have, that's going to require some availability, um, for both Sheriff Woods, Chief Balkin, um, and also from Bellevue PD as well, who we all have SRO contracts with.
Right.
And, um, my, I, I don't, I don't have any preference. I, obviously it wouldn't matter if I did. But, uh, if, if you've got, if this session is a school safety update as it pertains to, uh, staff and decisions regarding us here, that's, you may choose to break it into two work sessions. One in which includes that we invite all of the, um, chiefs and one which includes just, uh, briefing on the issues.
If we can get them here earlier, let's do this.
And that's up to you.
Let's not keep this down the road. Let's, I'll, I'll make up accommodation. Let's go ahead and get them if, as soon as we can get them here, if they are willing to come. And, um, so that we won't have to keep kicking a can down the road. So, as soon as, um, Mr. McFadden can let us know the earliest meeting that we can get the sheriff and, um, Chief Balkin and Chief Follersworth here, um, we can just move forward and add that to one of the calendars. Is that okay with you, Mr. McFadden?
If I may, Chair, um, members of the Board, Attorney Powers, I would like to seek clarification on what it is that is being requested from my team and the purpose of the work. I'm fine with the work session, but I just don't understand, um, what our purpose is and what the, what the desire is from the board of our team. So, thank you.
From, from my perspective, um, I think that it's going to be important to know from, from staff that's involved with school safety and security, what they feel their, their needs are. Um, I feel quite reassured overall, um, again, in my school visits as of yesterday, there's, uh, schools that did not have the single entry, um, previously that have them now. A lot has been done over the summer to the credit of all the folks that were involved in making that happen. Thank you. So, I, I do think it is important to make it clear to the public that the work continues and we're actually ahead of schedule in a lot of our efforts, um, to make our schools more secure and while also maintaining that, uh, open feeling, you know, which seems like an oxymoron. You know, we want people to feel welcome, but we also want them to feel safe. So, for me, um, I really need to know what, what else is still needed. And then, maybe that will help flow the conversation with the chiefs. So, two meetings is fine with me. I don't care how many it takes. Um, we, we just, because it covers all the bases. If we can do that in, in, in one meeting and present the need and then see what the chiefs have to say, uh, I'm all about options. But I, I can't say I'm all about waiting.
Yes. Uh, my, my feelings is that we start with the sheriff. Yes, we do have the right, uh, to have any, any, any manner of plans. However, security must start with the sheriff from this board member's, uh, uh, point of view. Uh, we must not reinvent a wheel if in fact it is really functioning. Uh, we've seen nationally issues associated with various, uh, sundry, um, versions of safety, uh, uh, many of which did not turn out well. Uh, I am, I am, uh, dedicated to supporting, uh, Sheriff Billy Woods as he moves down through, uh, our organization and helps us be the absolute safest and best we can be. We can use the term safety. We can double the term safety. We can do a lot of talking about safety, but real true safety is hard and fast. And our sheriff, uh, for me, is the key. Thank you.
And Reverend Cummings, I can say this for certain. If, if sooner is the preference than the August 4th date, a- and we wish to include, uh, the representatives of those law enforcement agencies, the heads of those law enforcement agencies, the fourth will definitely not work because the SROs, including Sheriff Woods, it's, are going to be, uh, indisposed.
Correct. So, as soon as you guys can get, get it scheduled.
I, I will.
Think we need to brief the, uh, Superintendent on.
Yes.
From last week.
She needs to be briefed on our shade meeting.
Uh, that, yeah, and that still doesn't alleviate the question of we want, you know, there needs to be clarity as to what it is the board wishes to have presented. But, um, as to who the presenters may be and also as to who they want to be able to discuss items with. So, because I'm, you know, I, I, I think the board has clarified that now. Um, I just don't think it was necessarily entirely clear before.
That we have an agenda set for what actually will be discussed during that. I believe Mr. Browning is the one that had asked for us to have the work session. Are there specific pieces that?
Absolutely. Yes. Uh, is the, the entire plan. I would like to see it brought forward in a formal, uh, specific manner, uh, with the sheriff onboard. And the sheriff then can bring in these i- individual city, uh, departments. However.
Board Member Browning, what plan are you talking about?
The, a, our safe schools plan, uh, uh, ongoing, uh, the actual implementation of safe schools. We've, we've had multiple shade meetings where various individuals went off to interact with the Sheriff's Department. However, I would like to see it take place, uh, in front of the board, in a work session. So, we are, we're all on the same page.
Mr. Brown, you just lost me. Um, we, our safe school plan right now is that we have SROs on our campuses. Am I correct? Am I missing something?
That is correct.
That's, uh, that's correct. And I would like to have a actual work session with the, with the sheriff onboard so that we see how those are implemented. So, that's what a work session is for me. Uh, I'd like to, and it's in the shade. I get that. It's, it's important that it be done that way. Uh, but I, there, uh.
Are you, are you asking for a work session to discuss, um, like, uh, like how incident or scenario would take place and?
Chain of command, chain of command, uh, Chairman, uh, that, that type of thing. What, what we would typically do.
Is that something Attorney that we would do out in the?
I need to clarify, uh, was your question, you mentioned shade. You, you, your, your question is that you want to?
Well, to the extent it must be in the shade, uh, uh, yes, because these areas do get difficult. Uh, what becomes a normal work session, open to the public, and we want to have it as much as, uh, possible, open to the community. That way, everybody's on the same page, which is my objective. Uh, uh.
There are certain security issues that should never be discussed.
Well, exactly. So, so part two is that if we have to reduce then to the shade, we do it. And we certainly have that capability.
Well, we don't, we, we would not have the ability to do a shade session with other public officials, um, on what you're discussing. We would need to be doing.
With the sheriff?
Right. I mean, we, as any portion of a meeting that discusses sensitive information, as defined in Florida statute, as under the school safety statute there, would be, or I'm sorry, under the sunshine law exemption, uh, for school safety, would need to be, the, that portion of the meeting which discusses those items is exempt, um, from sunshine law. However, I need to be real clear before we start down, up, down a path of organizing what it is we're looking to do, what your request is, so that I can make sure that we are not doing things in the shade that need to be done in the sunshine and equally importantly, vice versa, that we're not doing things in the sunshine that need to be conducted in the shade. So, and of course, this is one of those issues that, that's going to have some mixture of the two. So.
Have it as open, have it as open, uh, a, a workshop as possible, and then defer to the shade when that is legally required. That would be my.
Yes, sir. And, and that's why I would want some, some specificity because of the fact that I can't unring a bell.
Our Superintendent needs to weigh in on this.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Members of the Board, for, for clarity purposes, I have been briefed by my team members that were there, um, which led to my question based on your discussion today. So, um, to Attorney Powers' point, I concur. Um, I just need clarity on what is expected from my team for the work session so we can make sure that we meet your, um, your goals and desires for that work session. And I'm still a bit unclear. I did hear Ms. Thor, I, I, I hear your, um, input as to safety practices and hardening, um, updates, what we're doing in our schools, um, that are permitted to be provided publicly. Um, Mr. Browning, I hear your comment regarding the Sheriff's Office. I'm not quite sure, um, if you could clarify for me what you would, would like to hear from our team in terms of a presentation or discussion that would help with that.
That's primarily, uh, designed around chain of command. Uh, as I see it, the weakness, uh, that's associated, and I don't want to go toward weakness, uh, in terms of dialogue. However, the weakness that nationally is, is, uh, has manifested itself is in a weak chain of command, a chain of command that often is not followed. Uh, a Uvalde situation with 10, uh, individuals in the corridor, and then we double that. If we double it. If we double it to 20, does that make it safer? No. If we double it again to 40, no, it does not make it safer. What I'm looking for is a hard chain of command from the sheriff, straight down through the school district. That's what I'm looking for. And as it manifests itself, I want that, when I say I want, I become quite demanding if you talk about security, and I think we all feel that way. We must have the shortest possible chain of command down from the top, the sheriff, down through the eliminating of the threat within the school district. That is, would be my chain of command. Military is a great model for that. Sheriff Billy Woods has, he's got this clear. He understands it. He understands his mandate. He understands his constitutional mandate. And where we do have rights, our biggest right is to exercise great judgment in the shortest possible chain of command and addressing of issues of force on any threat to a student or faculty or any, any part of our organization.
So.
That's my position.
For clarity, because I'm really missing something and I don't consider myself to be short on things, but are you saying that you're looking for Sheriff Woods to be the direct contact for our Safe Schools Department?
I'm looking for Sheriff Woods to, we start with the Constitution. The Constitution says that for every square inch of Marion County security, it is harbored in Sheriff Billy Woods. Then, as we participate in the county, yes, we come straight down out of our top security officer, down through this school district, and we make it.
Are you negating our Safe School?
We're not, we're not negating anything. What we're doing is we're making it effective. Again, I go back to Uvalde. If you fill a room, you fill a corridor, you have 10, you double it. You say, well, this is a safe, safe situation. Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. Let's make this actually safe according to our top law enforcement individual carries the full constitutional responsibility for every inch, not in crisis, but every moment of every day here in Marion County. And then, as we exercise our rights and we do our job, we're going to have the best. If I'm associated or you're associated or any member on this DSS is associated, it's going to be the best that we can provide. That's my objective, and it starts with a short chain of command.
So, I'm going to get you, Ms. Thor. We, Sheriff Woods is always in this process, has always been in the process, has always been the chain of command, so I'm not understanding that. It's almost as if we're saying that he's not in the chain of command. We essentially talked about who is in our, who, our chief of police or our Safe School Director or whatever title we've given him, we've already knew who that is, and that has been stated, that our Safe School Director, our Chief of Police, does have a ranking or line that he goes through, and it should be to the superintendent. Well, in an incident, he's the incident commander in an incident, and then if the sheriff gets there, then he turns it over to the sheriff, if the sheriff wants it. The sheriff doesn't have to take over the incident. Am I saying that right? Mr. McFadden?
Let's.
Mr. McFadden, come to the thing. That's law enforcement protocol. The first person on the scene is the incident commander.
Hence the workshop, hence the workshop. So, that would be my.
Because it sounds like we're trying to negate something. Go ahead, Mr. McFadden.
So, good morning. Thank you again for what you're doing here today, and just for some clarification, I think we may be talking about two different things. There were some meetings with the sheriff and the chief, but that was strictly about the SRO contracts, had nothing to do with this particular item that you're talking about, this discussion. So, since my time at the sheriff's office, years and years of training and working with them, we have had policies and procedures in place that any time a school shooting happens within more recent times now, that those officers on scene, they are going to go in that building and they're going to address the threat. We're not going to wait for 20, 30 officers lined up in a hallway to take care of business. I'm not going to speak for Sheriff Woods, Chief Balkin or Chief Holland, but my personal experience with them, my personal relationship with them and the way they train their staff, me personally, I do not believe that what happened in Uvalde, what happened here in Marion County, where there is a line of sworn armed, ready-to-go officers or deputies lined up in a hallway and not entering into that building. I have full faith and confidence that those SROs on our campus, as they engage or get into a situation, they're going to act accordingly to make sure that the bad guy is focusing on them and maybe direct his aggression at them and not at our students, and they will do whatever it has, they have to do to take care of business. Now, as deputies and officers come onto the campus and responding, those that are in the immediate area, as they get there, they're going to be doing the same thing. They're going to get there and they're going to take care of business, and that has nothing to do with who's in charge or who's in the chain of command. That is just what's going to happen. I don't need authority from anybody to go in there and take care of that bad guy. If I'm a deputy SRO in this, in the school or deputy from the street, I'm not waiting for an order from the chief or anybody or the sheriff to go in and take care of the guy. We're going to do that just by natural, that is what we do. That is what they do. So, the chain of command thing unfortunately has really nothing to do with the fact that if something is happening on our campuses, the sheriff has authorized, the chief has authorized, Chief Holland, Chief Balkin, Sheriff Woods has authorized way back when, from the very first day, not to sit around and wait for others to come in and tell you what to do. You're a deputy, you're an officer, you've got the equipment, the tools and the resources to take care of business, go do it. We'll discuss all the other stuff later.
Ms. Thor.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. It's reassuring, I'm sure anyone that's listening, it's reassuring to me as a school board member and it's reassuring to me as a community member. You know, what happened in Uvalde was just such a failure. It's going to be on my mind until I'm no longer on the school board. I don't, I don't really think I could live with myself if anything happens. So, that means prevention, 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 and so I believe that we're sort of on the same wave, Board Member Browning, when it comes to this. You know, to me, it's two separate things. There's prevention, which I feel should be the majority of our focus, and that's what we're doing, you know, with the hardening, with the relationships that we have, the great relationships that we already have with our law enforcement entities and continuing that, and having a conversation in the work session that can be in the sunshine because this is a big community issue, you know. So, whatever we can discuss in the sunshine, I feel like needs to be discussed. It's the beginning of the school year. There's just been a huge tragedy, you know. Let's get, we have so much opportunity to have a really successful year that to me, this is something that we absolutely have to address early. So, that's the prevention piece, you know. What are we doing? Who is, and again, we always talk about how big Marion County is and how, and every school is different, every access point. The ones that know the most about the schools are the ones that are in the schools every single day, those, the SROs that we are trusting to walk those schools, know those schools, and then the support staff that you have. You know, what are we equipping them with? Because they're at schools too. And being on the same page with our law enforcement entities so that they know who these people are as well, because shifting that into a crisis, rolling over into a crisis, that's going to help the communication flow better because we all already know each other and we all have already had this discussion. There's a familiarity of what school has what. That's where I'm going with this.
Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir, and I thank you. I would like to just make sure that I have a clear, as the superintendent said, a clear plan for what it is that we intend to be presented so that we can ensure that it is all parties, the superintendent, myself, and as a courtesy to Sheriff Woods and his counsel, my colleague, Mr. McCourt, that we don't run such a meeting in just a, hey, we've got all the right people in the room, let's see what happens. I mean, we, I want to be, I want to have adequate preparation so that I can, not that they might need much preparation at all, but sort of an agenda that outlines what it is that we're looking to do. So, what I've heard is sort of some broad brushstrokes, and when we get to the specifics, it is that we want to introduce the plan and talk about the chain of command, but I don't know if that adequately represents what it is that I'm, I want to make sure that I'm hearing what it is the board is saying that it wants to hear so that I can, you know, and I'm not trying to be a dullard here about it, I want to make sure that I am able to get coordinated with Mr. McFadden, with my colleague from the sheriff's office, with Mr. Woods, Sheriff Woods, so that we have those things all efficiently prepared for you.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So, we start with the sheriff. We cannot, the outline for the workshop is to have the sheriff present as our chief security officer from Marion County. Have him present, and we do a workshop. And a workshop means we process through the issues that are at hand. One that comes to mind clearly is a short chain of command. I see an academic chain of command. I see a contact and activity chain of command. I see, I see multiple versions over the last three, four, five years of how things could play out, and we've had many examples of how they don't play out well, it seems, often in a, in an emergency. So, with that said, we have a workshop, and we don't say, we don't do the workshop ahead of time in order to do the workshop. I would like to see the sheriff here, and I would like to question the sheriff as to what his intentions are in providing the best possible security for, for the school district and for this county. And then, we include cities, then we include organizations such as Safe Schools. We include the various components that would be germane to that workshop.
May I be recognized, Chair? And so, I have the ultimate respect for Sheriff Woods, and I don't doubt at all his capability of being able to just discuss any of the areas under his expertise at the drop of a hat. I would simply like to be able to give him some indication of what our purpose is. So, is that summary by Board Member Browning, is that, is that the consensus of the board for the directive that I should give to Mr. Woods, Sheriff Woods, for his participation in this meeting or for our staff for the work session?
I have to just say, I'm really unclear because I have been sitting on this board for a few years. I understand the chain of command. I understand where Sheriff Woods' role plays. I understand Mr. McFadden's. I understand the training and the teachers, like, you know, my concern is being implemented, and hopefully, you know, it is and always is. So, I'm not, I'm not really sure about that work session. I liked what Ms. Thor said about the prevention, you know, because the students are in our classrooms. I would like to hear more about the preventions, like what are we doing, you know, to prevent these incidences if we can, you know? I understand lots of times we can't, but I'm not sure at this point inviting Billy Woods to tell us what is happening and whatever. I think it's, I trust that it is being taken care of and that our SROs are fully trained and he's on top of that. So, I mean, that's just my thoughts.
From my understanding, I thought part of that prevention piece was also empowering our people to be able to do certain things. That was the piece that I was understanding, not a chain of command. I too understand the chain of command as well, so I'm kind of lost when we keep talking about a chain of command. I thought we were talking about prevention and having more than less from the conversation that I was under the impression that we were trying to get more, not less, and so.
I think ultimately, less is more, and when you have a, there are solutions, guardian, training, who carries, who doesn't carry, hardening, the advertising.
We should never, ever, ever announce to our community who is carrying, who is not carrying, what schools are hardened completely, what schools are not. You will make our schools vulnerable for that one person that may have ill intentions. So, I wholeheartedly disagree with ever exposing any vulnerabilities.
In which case, we do have shade situations, which is exactly what we're discussing. And that's the beauty of it.
You did not suggest that. You just suggested that Sheriff and Dennis come up here and tell who carries, who doesn't, and expose that. I just agree with that. I do not think that we should expose our schools, our campuses, our precious students, our employees to that.
Can we say to the extent possible, a conversation about prevention, coordination?
Empowering our people and.
The ones that are closest to the, to the.
Yes.
Is, you know, yeah.
That makes, that makes sense to me as a board member.
And there are so many details. One of the big issues has been a range training that has held up almost on an, almost an annual holdup. Some of the problems that have been associated with who is authorized and what is that chain of command. So, it's so exciting as we have this level of discussion because it tightens up, and as it tightens up, it hardens. And like a military base, once it's hard, it's hard, and that's the exciting part. The shorter the chain of command, the tighter, the stronger, the safer, now we have something. And I believe a workshop will take us in that direction, especially under Sheriff Billy Woods' constitutional authority. Certainly, we aren't, we don't lose anything in that direction, and now we broaden and we harden and we become safer. So, to me, it's very exciting for the community, and really, we might be a model for the nation in this regard because everybody's talking about it, everybody wants the same thing, everybody wants security, and I think we'll ultimately get there.
A process question. I feel like that that could end up going into a situation where we would need to have shade for the, for the concerns that, yes, and because we know that the system and the process for being able to implement all of the options that we have has to be reasonable and it has to be expeditious. So, with that being said, where that would fall in terms of conversation, I feel like it's conversation that needs to be had. How it is had is up to people that, like attorneys.
Well said.
Yeah, I know Dr. Girl has something else to say, but I just want to clarify again. Attorney Powers, please indicate, we are not able to have a shade session. Attorney Powers, please indicate, we are not able to have a shade session with other individuals apart from Marion County Public School officials. We are not able to have a shade meeting with the county commission, for example, or with the property appraiser, or with the sheriff. We are not, that is not the way Sunshine Law is written. We can have a shade session with the Marion County School Board and our employees, but we are not able to include anyone outside of Marion County Public Schools. Is that correct?
I don't think it is.
Let's let our attorney answer.
I don't think it is.
Okay.
It is...
There would be very unusual circumstances. I will, I will go, they, they aren't here, and they aren't now. I will research Attorney General's opinions to see if that ever is the situation. Has it ever been? Or are there limited exceptions or exemptions? Because that's the case in general, is there's, there's often an exemption here or there. To everything within my training, knowledge, and experience, we ain't seen that here.
Perfect, perfect. Yes, then, I'd be looking forward to that.
Chair, if I may, if I may recap, members of the board. Our team is going to prepare for a discussion to, on prevention, on coordination, empowering, and I put engaging, right, our whole team, and what we're doing. I wholeheartedly support, as your superintendent, having a session on, on safety. It's paramount. We cannot educate our students without a safe environment. So, I do agree and think that, I know that everyone here is committed to ensuring that what happened at Uvalde never happens in Marion County. Hope it never happens anywhere again. But I appreciate your support of that, and we are, we will prepare to do that to the fullest extent that we can, have that conversation publicly that's appropriate and necessary for our community, to know that we're doing everything we can to make sure our students and our staff are safe. If I may as well, to the second part of the question, I have the chart in front of me of the work session topics. If I may just briefly review that for August, it might provide some clarity, because there were some changes based on the receipt of the budget. So, coming up on August 11th is our next special work session. That's just the tentative budget general fund for 2223. On August 18th, as we've already discussed, the five-year district facility program and the 2022, 2023 tentative budget, we've already discussed that. And then, the last one in August right now is the work session on the 25th with the continuation of the budget if needed, if that provides some clarification. Thank you.
So, at this juncture, the August 4th, there isn't a topic. I, I know there has been, to Ms. King's point, is there anything else that this board needs to be doing to ensure a smooth start to school? Transportation, have, have we, you know, done everything we can on transportation? Have we done everything we can on teacher vacancies? Have we done everything that we can to ensure the population understands what our school start and stop times are going to look like? With these schools that have now gone to single-point entry, I'll use Osceola Middle School as an example, car line for Osceola Middle School is going to be shifting significantly. It's not something we've talked about, but I don't know if we need to, but are there things that we, as a board, need to have conversation about or talk about in a work session and/or board meeting to ensure we have a smooth start to school, and that's our next meeting prior to school starting? So...
So, are you saying to have, I, I want us to have work sessions, but not just to meet, just to meet?
Understood.
If we're, if we're having a work session to...
Be productive.
To get an update, be productive, and move something along, let's do that. But I don't want us to just put a topic in there, just for us to have a meeting. If we need an update for the start of school, that would be great. That would be the time to do it. But if we don't have to have it, if we know we're moving in the right direction, Superintendent, it's your baby. So, you tell us.
And I hear the, thank you, Chair. I hear the, the questions and the conversation. We will certainly provide that. If, if you would like, it could be a work session topic. If you want more in-depth information, we do have updates to provide with regard to transportation, our new badging, identifying students, the vacancies. We can do that at the work session, or we can also provide some space to do that on the 9th, which is the day before school. It's, it's entirely up to the board and your desire. We are certainly hard at work, and that is our job, to make sure that we're doing that, and we have multiple means of communicating that to our, our parents and our public.
Board?
What do you think would keep the flow going? Is there a, a date that seems like it would be better operationally, the 4th versus the 9th? I, I know, transportation is, is huge, and, and we have been talking about it through all of last year and, and into this summer, and, and all of the initiatives for getting more people hired on. So, it's not like we haven't been talking about it, but it would be good to have an update of, you know, where are we? Half of our kids at least ride the bus. That brings itself, if we get more kids on the buses, and more kids feel, parents feel comfortable having their kids get on the bus, because the buses are on time, then that reduces car lines. So, so it's all connected. So, those kinds of, of high-level updates would, would really be important. I think they'd be beneficial for the community to hear, because last year, we were forced to start in chaos. We, we thought things were going to be one way, and then Delta reared its ugly head, and, and we had to pivot. And we're all praying that that's not, we're not going to need a pivot point this year, that we can start the year a well-organized system. And that's the business aspect. You have to have a stable, well-organized system. So, anything, updates along those lines, I think are super important as we kick off this year.
So, can Superintendent, can we add, on August 4th, a school reopening?
Mm-hmm.
Update topic, which will address transportation, vacancies, what else?
School overcrowding, maybe? If we are putting portables in some locations, where those are going to be?
On portables, because I know Liberty got a bunch of them.
Right. So, I, I mean, those, those are topics that have been in the community all summer. So, if there's something that we could do as an update prior to that August 10th start of school, I think that would be helpful.
That's providing the immediate relief to overcrowding. Yes, it's making the campuses bigger, but, you know, it's not like we can just go boom and have a wing, or boom and have a school.
And if there's anything that we, as a board, can do to ensure that, you know, again, to Ms. King's point, like, what, what, is there something we need to be doing to ensure that we can have a smooth start to school?
So, basically, that morning, we'll just have a work session to have Superintendent ...
I'd love an update on Fordham, too, because that's our new school.
Yes, I was thinking that as well. I made a note about that as well. Yes, we'll be happy to. I think it's a, a good opportunity. I would, I was going to answer and reply that I do think the 4th is better than the 9th, provides more time for the information to get out there, such as the example with transportation, and new identification measures that are going to be in place this year. That might take a little more time at first, but that'll help to ensure that students are on the right buses, going to the right places on time. So, we'll be happy to provide reopening updates.
And what do you need from us? I felt like that was really important to say.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And then, also, so, we have a topic for the 4th, well, we have a administrative, Superintendent's update on the 4th as a topic. And then, also, Mr. Green, immediately following that meeting, we can move straight into that shade session. This is CBA.
Which is a big part of the reopening of schools.
Which is CBA, collective bargaining, so, okay? We all good with that?
I am looking forward to a productive meeting, not just a soapbox for us to come up here and talk, and I want us to really listen and know what's going on, because we know, and probably next week or the following week, most certainly, we're going to be fielding a lot of phone calls and emails. So, if we just have, like, some information that may be coming our way, that, like they said, you know, I'm looking forward to that. And what comes to my mind, too, is like books. I know we had a hard time, you know, with the books and stuff. Like, are, are students going to have books, you know, in the classroom on the first day of school? You know, that's important to me, you know, that on day one, that we're hitting the ground running. And if not, what happened and why, you know, stuff like that. So, just a little update. Thank you.
I guess we're looking...
Academic ball rolling. We're going to get moving.
I guess we're trying to think out kinks before they happen.
Right.
Yes.
Problems, problems, problems prior to, and kind of think about it. So, I, I get it. I'm, I'm with you on that, because we do a lot of calls, and we want, we want it to be as smooth as possible the first day. There will be hiccups, but we want to try and smooth out those things that we can smooth out. Okay?
Summer school is any indication. I don't know about the rest of the board, but we usually get calls when people are unhappy. That's just the way it is. And personally, I got zero calls about transportation issues, about academic issues, about scheduling issues. So, I'll just take that as a quick minute to thank everybody that was involved with setting sale for summer school, and I'm interested to hear the outcomes. That would be also to add to that work session, is outcomes of summer school. How did we do with credit recovery? How did we do with kids that needed that extra? How did we do with the kids that needed acceleration? Because something good, but something really good was going on. Any school I visited, it was calm, they were doing it, and I wasn't getting high-rate phone calls. So, that's a pretty good indicator, coming and going.
And Attorney Powers, your training is that day, so as soon as we get through with that, and get through the shade session...
Yes, sir.
Then you'll be able to do your training, okay? So, there will be a topic for, there will be some, we just gave the topics for the August 4th, 2022 meeting at 9 o'clock. There'll be a shade session to follow that, immediately following that. Special work session scheduled for August 11th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Purpose of the special work session is to discuss 2022, 2023 tentative budget, general fund. The next administrative briefing and work session scheduled for August 18th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of that work session is to discuss the five-year district facility ban, 2022, 2023 tentative budget continued, capital projects, debt service, special revenue, food service, special revenue, other federal, state, and local grants, and internal service fund. Special work session scheduled for August 25th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the special work session is to discuss the 2022, 2023 tentative budget, if needed. So, if we conclude the budget at the 18th, the 25th meeting will not be needed. Okay? All righty, board concerns, Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
Yes, sir.
Glad you're back.
Thank you.
Attorney Powers?
Just to let you know, I have already begun some research with the Sunshine Law to determine, under what circumstances, a collegial body such as a board may engage in sunshine-protected or exempt meetings with others. I'm determined that if it exists, I'll, I'll find it. There may not be a mechanism that I know right now that, that permits that, and I'll, I'll present that to the board when I have that answer.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, again, members of the board. I do have a few items, as we are working very hard to ensure a smooth start of the school year for our students and for student learning. As you may know, this is what we call ESTER Week. What that means, essentially, is that we're using those federal dollars afforded to us to mitigate the gaps from the pandemic for professional learning. So, it's occurring throughout our district. A lot of, lot of learning opportunities. I've already heard great feedback from a number of folks, of our teachers, that have been involved in that. A lot of collaboration, things we have not done previously. Also, we have a back-to-school community give-back event this Saturday. I'm excited to announce that this partnership is the first of its kind. With the Community Foundation of Marion County, Advent Health, Ocala, and many other partners, we're doing this give-back event, and it's not just occurring at a central location, it's occurring at, at schools throughout our district. And so, we have 200 volunteers, and we'll be providing 6,000 backpacks. So, in addition to our wonderful veterans, which we appreciate their efforts, we're also going to be providing 6,000 backpacks across seven locations on Saturday. So, thanks to Ms. DeBick and the entire team for coordinating efforts with our community. We appreciate them. Another exciting piece, to ensure that our families and students are ready for learning on the first day of school, that we held our first ever Engage MCPS session. And what that is, is essentially, it's back-to-school basics. So, we had a, a virtual session. We had over 200 families in attendance at the last one. We have already, for the upcoming meeting, which is this week, on July 28th, we already have 316 additional families registered. And they get to hear about what we're doing in our schools, how we're ensuring that we're meeting the basic needs of our students, and elevating and accelerating those foundational skills in literacy and mathematics, and, and how we can join together to accelerate those outcomes for students. So, really excited about the efforts of, of really engaging our families in a whole different level, in addition, some of the things that we rolled out last year. So, excited about that. They're also hearing about BPK, kindergarten enrollment, to make sure that the messaging is out there. I also want to let you know that, as a reminder, that, that your committee, the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, is meeting this week at 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, and we're meeting here, first-ever live version of that meeting. So, the committee members will be here on stage. It will be televised. So, we will be providing our last quarterly report for this year, so the public gets to see what we do each quarter, and wrap up the year, so they get to see how the committee works, to hear from the updates of the spending from the referendum dollars. So, that will be televised, 4:00 p.m. here at the, from MTI. Last but not least, thank you again for today. You supported and approved grant applications, one of those of which you talked about briefly was the summer learning. We appreciate, and, and I can't thank you enough, for your support of ensuring that our teachers have the resources they need for our students, that they're in the hands of our students, student learning. We have had robust summer learning opportunities the last couple of years, and we want to continue to do that. We are not fully funded to do that every summer. That's something we advocate for in Tallahassee. And so, having these opportunities provided to us from the Department of Education is, are really important to ensure that learning doesn't just happen in our traditional calendar year, but it happens in the summer. And also, we, I, I think it needs to happen on Saturdays where available. And so, we need to continue to think differently about reaching our students to ensure they have the learning that they need. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Browning?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, well, to add on to Superintendent's comments, the, the newspaper really spoke to the $900 million-plus budget bulge of cash. And the exciting part about having so much money is that we can do what's near and dear to my heart, and I think to everyone's heart on this board, and that is to get full value for our, for our money. One of the ways we do that is to take the general fund, and when we pay for something that we typically would have spent general fund dollars on, we now have that money available in the general fund. And that's exciting. Exciting, I, I want to be sure that we don't think it's free money, flying around, extra, spend it, and, and I know we're not doing that. But spend it, just because we've got it, that every single dollar matters. Speaking of which, the backpacks. And Colonel Hamm, he was the key to Stanton Safety going back, and I'm going back for five years. He was, he, he said he could solve the problem within a day. And I, I, at some point, I want to bring him into play. He and Susie McGuire have really done an admirable job. I'm interested, as to the 6,000 backpacks, how do we divvy them out? How do we decide who gets what? Who gets a, a free backpack, and who doesn't? And is it a lottery-type thing? Do we, do we get chances? Do we take chances? What do we do, Superintendent? Talk to me about that, and then I'll come back to mine.
Certainly, Mr. Browning. No, it's not a lottery. If you'd like, Ms. DeBick can provide the details of how it's being facilitated, but that's why it's an outreach to, to all of our families, to make sure that anyone who needs it has the appropriate resources to get started on a, on a, on a great note this year.
Good morning. Yes, Board Member Browning. So, this event in partnership with the Community Foundation and Advent Health, Ocala, it's something that actually has been done in Hillsborough County for the past few years. One of the major beneficiaries is the Bullard Family Foundation, so they are the ones who donate the backpacks. Myself, Dr. Hembrook, and Mr. McFadden actually spent two Saturdays ago stuffing 30,000 backpacks. So, Marion County is getting... So Marion County is getting 6,000 of those, and the rest will go to Hillsborough County. Hopefully, we'll get more next year. But as far as the registrations, families do have to register for a spot. So we have been putting it out to the entire community, the county, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. I will say all of the spots are taken at this point. However, we do work very closely with Colonel Hamm, with Stuff the Bus. There are several other events happening around the same time, some that same day. So as people are reaching out because those spots are filled, we are referring them to the other events, so we will make sure everyone has what they need to start the year successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that's real helpful. Uh, uh, so the, uh, then to continue with the, with safe schools and safety, um, and here we're opening again at Stanton. This is the 65th anniversary. Uh, we're lacking even a stop sign. So I use a stop sign as a trigger, uh, to highlight the need for safety. Uh, everybody, make it your business to go take a look. There is absolutely no reason why school buses should cross in front of an intersection within 25 to 50 feet of our school, uh, without so much as a stop sign. Uh, so, and I want lights, I want all kinds of things, and I'm pretty demanding. And you can just blame it on an old board member, uh, uh, for that. I've been, I've been at it for a lot of years. Um, the, uh, the, uh, hiring our teachers, hiring our own, we really need to, uh, delve down on that. Uh, I, I've traveled the world myself, uh, uh, speak some languages, uh, love interaction international, uh, have a minor in international marketing. International is great, but I want to support and enhance our teachers. And if we're going to ever pay somebody above a teacher, then let's elevate the teacher. Uh, and that's a force, uh, to be reckoned with because every school started with a teacher and a structure and students and a community. And it gets down to the fundamentals, almost like the standard model, uh, in physics. We get down to the most fundamental, uh, uh, element, and we look at a hydrogen atom, and it's got a proton, it's got an electron, and a lot of things are built out of it. So, uh, let's, uh, let's go that way with our, with our teachers, and let's celebrate them. And I guarantee you, we can increase the population. Uh, it has to do with treating them as well as anyone is treated in the school district financially. Thank you.
Ms. Thor?
Thank you. Um, we've already covered a lot of ground today, so I, I know sometimes I'm famous for saying I'm going to keep it brief, and then I get passionate, but I'll do my best to stay within myself. Um, hurricane preparedness, I attended, um, back on June 17th, um, the elected officials meeting about hurricane preparedness, and, uh, Marion County is becoming more and more of a go-to county for other, uh, populations from other counties, um, you know, along the coastline and coming in. So, and, uh, in addition to how fast our community is growing. And I will, uh, say thank you so much, uh, originally to, um, Board Member Kelly King for really bringing awareness to this. I can't remember if it was when you were chair or, or what, but it was, it was, it was just so important, and it made me realize how broad our roles are as, as school board members. Um, we have gone in the past two and a half years from 11,000 to 22,000 sheltering spaces available. And it's still not enough. Our, our goal, um, with, uh, Preston Boland from Emergency Management, our sheriff, you know, there's just so many agencies that are involved in, in helping people when, when a hurricane is, is imminent and shelterings, shelters have to open, which, oh, by the way, are our schools. And, oh, by the way, it is our staff that mans these shelters. That's not true in, in every other county, but in our county, sadly, we, we learn the hard way and we, because it was damage done to our shelters. Um, and we also take our responsibility to take care of our community as educators very seriously. So, um, with, with that being said, we, our goal was 30,000 spaces. And so we still need more. Um, there was, uh, there's more need, uh, but, but costs have kind of killed us. Uh, but we'll get there. And our population increase is going to continue to require more sheltering. We have a huge increase in RV parks, and, you know, those, uh, fifth wheels are great for living in until a big storm's coming up. So if, if you look around the community, you'll, you'll understand more of, of the need. And we also end up not always getting reimbursed for all of our costs. And even if we do, it takes a really long time. You know, $600,000 here, $800,000 there, that, that we don't see again, um, i- is an issue. Um, yes, we, we have a big budget, and thank God we do, because you think about the, the role that our public school plays in terms of our community. It is absolutely immense. So I just wanted to give a, a little bit of an update on, on, on that. Our emergency management team stands ready. They, they do text messaging now, all kinds of alerts, alerts now for what's going on with the weather. And i- it's not a big deal till it becomes a big deal, and then things move fast. So I'm really grateful to, to have that partnership. Um, the second thing that's on my mind is our paraprofessionals. We've had a lot of conversation about our, our paras and how so many of them worked, uh, not just last, through the last couple of years, but even previously to that. If a substitute couldn't be found, it was a parapro, you know, teaching that class. And, and really being the teacher, and that happened more and more over the last couple of years with so many absences. And I, I know that we're doing our best to make sure that our parapros are being treated as the professionals that they are. And I, I do have a re- request, and hopefully it's something that's being discussed. I can't imagine it wouldn't be amongst the superintendents in terms of advocacy with our legislature. Um, we might as well acknowledge what's actually happening. And what's actually happening is, is that we have parapros that have been performing as teachers that have the experience, that have the credentials, that we, that, that's being looked at to bring, you know, other people on board to help relieve this crisis and, uh, having quality teachers in front of our students. So I would offer that our paraprofessionals can fulfill that role just as well as anybody and probably better because they have been serving in this role. So we might as well just be honest about that. Is our goal to have, uh, highly qualified teacher in front of each and every single student? Absolutely. And to direct our funds so that we can foster that? We're fishing from a really small pond, and it's getting smaller and smaller. So we might as well catch all the big fish. But I, I believe that, um, paraprofessionals are our unsung heroes. We have a lot of unsung heroes in our school system that have been going above and beyond for a really long time. So if we're going to have the conversation about, you know, um, bringing people in at a reduced certification level, then let's look at the people that already have that same certification and experience. That's what's going to help our kids succeed. Um, the last thing I have is our volunteer opportunities became very scarce the last couple of years because we were trying to limit the number of people on campus. I know that hasn't helped us in terms of our academic performance. Our volunteers are so dedicated and so amazing, and there is so much opportunity at so many levels. I'm just going to put this out there to the community. Any skill that you have, any passion that you have, any hour that you have can be utilized in our public schools. And we know that the stronger the community support, the stronger our public schools. And our public schools aren't even public anymore. We support private schools, we support religious schools. You know, we're doing a ton of supporting, so we need a ton of people on board that see the mission, that see the vision, and are willing to help us take it forward. So if there ever was a year that you were thinking about jumping in, you know, just Google elementary school closest to me or the search engine of your choice, you know, uh, high school closest to me, middle school nearest me, whatever passion of age group of kids you have, then we need you. And, and we welcome you. And, and please, join us. The best way to find out what's really going on in our schools is to come and take a look. And the M, Leadership MCPS has been amazing. I've heard nothing but great feedback from community members that may or may not have had, uh, an accurate view or understanding or opinion about what really happens in our schools. You know, if it bleeds, it leads. So we're going to get all the drama in, in the newspapers. But what you're not going to get are the authentic kids, like the Aiden? Yes, that, hm? Yes, that was standing in front of us this morning. That bright little spirit with so much potential. That's what's in our schools. So come and see for yourself. That's all I have. It wasn't too bad considering how passionate I get.
I heard the passion just kept, kept bubbling up, yeah. Ms. King?
Ms. Thrower, I agree with you. I was watching the students this morning. I watched Aiden, and he just sat up there and just waved and not any ambitions and just, that's what our schools are full of. And also, when we saw our three students and they talked about their experiences and, and how well they're doing and they're succeeding. Hey, y'all, this is Marion County Public Schools. They are in our schools. They are great examples of, of how, um, the positives. Because like you said, Ms. Thrower, if it bleeds, it leads, and we hear a lot of that. But there's a lot of good, great and good too, and, um, I, I look forward to hearing what they do with their future. So since you were on a high, I thought I would say a high too. But I, yeah, um, next week, our teachers and some of our employees are going to be coming back. Um, but there was employees and our teachers and paras or whoever that worked summer school. And the, I just want to tell those, um, employees, thank you. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your ten- tenaciousness. Thank you for, uh, your perseverance. And thank you for focusing on student outcomes. Um, you guys wholeheartedly made a difference this summer, and it's exhausting. And I also want to tell the new teach, not new teachers, but any, um, teachers and our, all of our employees that are coming back, um, thank you. Thank you for coming back. Education and teaching is a noble profession. Is it tough right now? It is, it is taught tough. It's exhausting, and it's difficult. But again, each and every one of you are dedicated, and you're tenacious. You have perseverance. And, um, by the way, we're all, you're, you all and us, we're professionals. Hold your heads high. And let's just stay focused on those student outcomes and quit listening to all the news. And I would also like to tell the parents, thank you. Thank you for trusting your most valued treasure, which is your child, with Marion County Public Schools. And I'm looking forward to 2022. I don't know. I, I had a train of thought, kind of went out there, but I do want to just tell everybody, welcome back. 2022, 2023 year is going to be a new year. And, um, that's all I have to say today. Thank you. Oh, wait, no, one more thing, one more thing. I did hear something earlier about, um, the former Deputy Superintendent Colonel Hamm, that maybe he made mention that he could fix the Stanton-Weary's-Do problem in a year. Uh, that simply is not true. I was the chair when Dr. Hamm and I went out to visit that. He was part of that committee that, um, decided that nothing could be done on the school board end. So I knew that went out today. Um, I was there. I even think you were there, Mr. Browning, um, when Colonel Hamm was out there and that decision was made. So I just wanted a little bit of clarification on that too.
I'm heavily involved. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just heard that, and if we brought him up, I don't think he's going to say anything different than what he did back then. So, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Uh, by Chair Campbell?
Thank you. Uh, so first of all, I want to say thanks to Ms. Thrower for bringing up volunteering in our schools because it gave me the opportunity to, to look up and say, first of all, you're absolutely correct. Volunteers are vitally important. Mentors to our students are vitally important. So now is a great time to become approved as a volunteer in our district. There is an application process that has to be, uh, completed. And so I looked it up really quick on our website, how you can get there. You go to MarionSchools.net and then click on Departments, and it's under the Community Engagement Department tab. You can complete the online volunteer application form there. We do want as many volunteers as we can coming into our schools. That outside perspective, the hour of time you have, whatever it might be, that you're able and willing to give, please consider doing so in Marion County Public Schools. We are glad to welcome you in. Also, I wanted to note that I believe today will be the last time that we actually have to motion and vote on to approve donations. Uh, I know it was one of those that was in the process. There actually were a couple of things on the agenda today that think this might be the last time, according to our new policies that we have, uh, approved, the new Niola policies, uh, including that one about donations. So certainly while we still want to acknowledge the generosity of our community, and we will continue to do that, our new policies now allow, uh, that we don't have to approve those donations. They actually can get right to work the second those dollars come in. Well, maybe not the second. But as soon as those dollars come in, they can get right to the, um, locations that isn't waiting on a couple of weeks or even months of the school board approval for them to, um, move forward. So that is something I'm really grateful for, that we've approved in our policies. Uh, also, today, we approved a couple of new job descriptions, and I'm really, really, uh, grateful for the hard work that's been done on job descriptions. You guys as a board know that that's one of my little passion, um, things because it's so important that we better align responsibilities with evaluation. Um, and so I, I know that sometimes there are unique, uh, jobs that need their own specialized description, and so I'm grateful for that. We also approved today a new job description for Executive Director of Human Resources. We've been without one for a few weeks since our, our wonderful former employee retired, and I wish her best in her retirement, but we've been without an Executive Director of Human Resources. And hopefully after today's approval, that job's going to get posted really quickly, and I'm sure there will be qualified applicants that will be, um, coming in. Uh, but again, job descriptions are incredibly important, and that's also why I believe, as we, I alluded to much, much earlier in this meeting, uh, potentially if we were to have a new position, like a school health assistant or school nurse or something, having a very specialized job description, and I understand the value in that and what that would look like and the process it would take to create that, but I do believe it's possible to be done. We have other special, um, characteristics of, of jobs, accountants, technicians, different things like that. And ultimately, all of the people that come and work under the Marion County Public Schools umbrella, we have to just take a step back and say, is it better for us to have contract employees to do this job? Or is it better for us to have people with, within the house of Marion County Public Schools? And I think if we come back to the thought process of just asking what's best for kids, I think if that's our, our benchmark or baseline, what's best for kids, then potentially the answers may be different than what we're doing right now. So that's why I explored that, um, thought process earlier. I do think it's possible for us to have specialized job descriptions for those areas that are needed. And if we do decide, uh, the cost effectiveness as well as what's best for kids means we take a different direction than we've get done, uh, then I'm okay with that because I'm grateful to be a part of conversations, uh, with this board, as well as leaders in our school district that are going against the grain and against the statement, well, that's the way we've always done it. I encourage any employees, again, to first ask yourself what's best for kids. And if the answer, what's best for kids in your mind is contrary to a response you've been given, then I encourage you to continue to push back because we want to be about what's best for kids. And sometimes that isn't always what's always been done. A couple of other things I wanted to stress, I'm also looking forward to the upcoming meetings on the Code of Student Conduct as well as the budget. There's a lot there. And this board has a lot of work to do as far as reading through all of that and having our meetings, and we're going to have them. That's what we're here for. Our Code of Student Conduct is a, is policy, and so that's what we do, budget and policy. I also wanted to express, as we're going to be mentioning in our upcoming work session about the Fordham Early Learning Academy, but it is open for business. It is a unique model, uh, and it should be enticing for parents to consider. model uh, and it should be enticing for parents to consider, I'm gonna call it almost like a magnet type kindergarten program because it is a school choice option that students can, or that parents can choose for their children to attend kindergarten there. Obviously the K4 program as well, uh, but to attend kindergarten in an environment that is solely focused on early learners and early learning. I mean, it is a very unique model, new to this community. And if there are parents out there that have not already enrolled their kids in kindergarten or even maybe you wanna consider some unique opportunity like a choice program just for early learners, I encourage you to consider the Fordham Early Learning Academy because um, I, I know uh, Ms. Jennifer Beck uh, in charge of that program, she would love to have conversation with you about potentially enrolling your students. Uh, but I know my own children, my youngest actually went to a, a, a private uh, early learning academy here in town that really focused in those early years and almost had the ability to have like an accelerated class because of this group and it, and there's just opportunities that are available uh, at an early learning academy where all you're focused on is early learning. And so please, parents, if you haven't already made a decision for kindergarten, or even if you want to consider something unique and different for your student, uh, please do consider Fordham Early Learning Academy. And the final thing, obviously the school start of school is right around the corner. I'm excited. Our employees are participating in professional development right now as, as been indicated. Uh, we have our work session prior to school to publicly answer some of our questions uh, about how the start to school year is gonna be kicked off great. And so let's gear up to have the best school year that this district has ever seen. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Superintendent. This is Martinez Lopez, Attorney Powers. And to each of you, uh, my fellow board members, I appreciate each of you. And to our staff that have still patiently and, and kindly waited out here all day, all morning with us as we've gone through this meeting. And to the public that uh, participates in these meetings. Um, I want to first um, just clear something up because, and I've, I've said it before, but I, I keep getting the same questions asked uh, over and over again because of a statement that's being made. And I just wanna really try to put this home. Um, when it comes to the consent agenda items and items that are pulled, um, I keep getting the question, is there a certain dollar amount limit that we have to pull items? And I'm gonna just say it one more time. There are no local governmental limits for pulling an item off of the consent agenda item to discuss. It could be one dollar or it can be a billion dollars, but there is no limit. There is no set um, amount that we keep, and it, it keeps coming forth in our meeting. And I think the, the board member that does it just is saying it because that's their personal limit, but there is no limit on what amount you can pull an item. It does not have to be a hundred thousand dollars. Doesn't have to be fifty thousand. It could be eight, one dollar. It could have no dollar actually, and it can still be pulled. But I want, I want everyone to know that because I keep getting that question. So for the record, there are no local governmental limits for pulling an item to discuss. Any item can be pulled for discussion. Um, I do want to um, I, and I kinda wanna bring this up to you guys as a board. Um, we um, we got two schools that have um, scoreboards that were given to them, donated. Um, one being uh, Donnellan's and the other being Bellevue. And um, they were donated. And the, the thing with these donations, the cost of um, putting these boards, scoreboards up are astronomical. Um, the one that Donnellan has actually, um, I think is gonna be coming up for board approval, but we really need to kinda, I'm gonna ask that you guys kinda help us get this thing moving on so they can get it up before the season starts. It was donated and then we had a hurricane, a storm that came and knocked, knocked the other one down. So now we just need to get it up um, before the season. So I'm asking for consensus that we can go ahead and let them start the work on it. Mr. Knight is ready to go and um, getting them going in there with Bellevue. It's gonna be costly um, to put these up. The good thing about the one that Donnell is, it was an insurance claim. And so the insurance is gonna be paying for that one to go up, um, minus some of the uh, maybe the sound or the, the speakers or things like that. So I'm gonna be asking that from us as a board. But um, whenever we get these donations, that's what we were just talking about. Those things don't have to be approved anymore. That's a blessing because it keeps the system to moving and keeps everything going forward, which is a great thing. I do want to um, commend some folk as well. Um, on last Saturday, last Saturday, we had a fire at uh, tech services. And um, by the grace of God, um, nobody was hurt, no staff members, no civilians, no one um, was injured. Um, and this fire department was able to come and contain the, the fire and, and get the fire out. But I wanna commend our staff that, that on a Saturday evening, they, they were working. They were working. They were trying to make sure that everything was taken care of. Um, I happened to be on the scene with them. Um, but Mr. Viennello, Ms., Mr. McFattin, um, Sean Duncan, the supervisor for um, tech services, Amelia, Ms. Debick, and um, some of the other guys that work in tech services, made their way there to make sure that uh, any um, assistance or information that uh, was needed by the fire department and law enforcement, that they were, they were there to get it there. And then to those that were on the phone, Superintendent um, and Ms. Tabitha Irving, Teresa Boston Ellis and uh, Mr. Christian, they were, they, they were all in their own private spaces on that evening. Yet because Marion County School System is a um, is important to them, they made the school a priority on a Saturday afternoon. And that just shows the caliber of people that we have working within our district. So I commend all of them for um, for their um, unselfishness in, in making sure that they um, that everything was taken care of. The people that were displaced out of that building were all um, put in some good surroundings. Within, within hours, they had a plan. Um, there was no um, there was no lag and because my concern was, how is this gonna affect the start of school? And uh, again, a shout out to Mr. Viennello. He really moved it along. Um, Ms. Robbins, I talked to her on the phone as well. Um, but Mr. Viennello moved it along and made sure that um, Monday morning, um, these people were in a place at tech services, um, Mato, all of Mr. Calidoo, they were there. They made sure that everything was right. And we kept the process going. They moved it along and there was no bump in the road. So again, great job, great job. I commend you for that. I think I was telling Mark as we were walking, I was like, Mark, I'm, I'm getting ready to leave. This is your baby. So I'm not, I'm, that's not my, I stay in my lane. And that's, that's what his role is as uh, the Deputy Superintendent. He handled it extremely well. So again, I wanna commend them for that. Um.
Chair, if I may, I wanna interrupt you, but I think it's important to share with the board. Um, he probably would not want me to say this publicly, but I called to thank him. Sean Duncan spent the night in his truck so as not to leave the site, to make sure it was secure. So great leadership on his part. I just wanna thank him.
Great leadership, great leadership. I mean, they were there. Um, I, I was just, I was just thoroughly impressed. Um, Amelia who, who handles the warehouse and, I mean, it wasn't, they just were there rubbernecking. They were there, you know, Amelia was already thinking about where she's gonna get furniture and stuff from to, you know, desks and things to put these people in. Ms. Debick was there trying to figure out, you know, and, and working out a message and to get to the press. So it was, it was, it was really a great team effort. And when everybody, we have professionals in this district and they know what their jobs are. And sometimes uh, we may want to step in and try to help them do their jobs, but I think if we just let the professionals do what they're, what they're supposed to do, it comes out much better. And, and I, I, I left and, and, cause I'm not a fireman. Um, I'm not the Deputy Superintendent. I'm not tech services. I'm definitely not um, public relations. And all of that stuff got handled um, extremely well. So, and, and thank you Sean for being there. We were, we were up close. We got, I was the first one there. Cause and, and let me, let me, let me, there's one person in this whole process I have to thank, the community. Because it was the community that notified um, um, the fire department and they called us. It was one, actually one of our staff members. It was one of our teachers that was driving down the road and uh, he saw it, called, called it in. And then he texts me, I was, I was speaking at a banquet and I was like, you know, I hit the button, I was like, call you back later. And then he called right back. I was like, didn't he just see what I just said? And uh, and uh, I said, I'll call you back later again. So this time, he just sent a picture of a building on fire. He was like, I think you need to call me. The building's on fire. And so of course, I, I called and, but it was a staff member that saw this, that's again, that goes off to him. I won't say his name because he wouldn't want me to say it. But um, we, we have great community, great community ties and connections. And um, I was there, Sean got there. Sean was there like in five minutes behind me. And, and, and we were so close, the, the police ran us off. Cause it was like, you guys need to get back cause it's gonna blow and we don't wanna try to be, so. But it is what it is. And, and Dennis was on the way. So um, I, I just thank them guys for, for their quick action and, and, and their, their support and that. In times of crisis, um, they didn't, they didn't, they weren't selfish. And they didn't just say, you know what? I, I'm just not gonna answer the phone today. They, they, they came in, um, Ms. Tabitha Irving, she was on that phone pressing the buttons and, and, and giving me updates and cause we, I couldn't get a direct link to the superintendent. And uh, but I wanted the superintendent to know because as a board member, it's my job to make sure that the superintendent knows that she don't get blindsided. And that's how it's supposed to be. Um, so it went well. Um, Ms. Thrower, I heard you. I heard you when you were talking about um, the Paris. We know that some things just changed where um, veterans are able to be teachers um, and get these certificates. But we do have people in front of our kids already. We have qua, we have Paris that are doing those jobs and that uh, some have degrees, some don't have degrees. But we, we need to celebrate them and encourage them to, and, and know exactly what we have in front of our students. Um, and know that we are putting the best in front of them, our students, and that um, encouraging them to go further and do those things that they want to do in the educational field. Um, we, we, we've been short teachers a long time. And I know sometimes people think this is a new phenomenon, but this is a, this is a nationwide crisis. Cause folk are leaving the field um, left and right. So I wanna thank all of those uh, teachers that are coming back, to all those Paris that are coming back, to all the, the staff members that are coming back um, another year, our bus drivers, our bus aides that are coming back uh, uh, again. And to our um, our hiring hometown, hiring event that we had last week. I'm, I'm praying that there was some fruit that came out of that as well. I heard there were some. And I'm hoping that we'll get more out of those um, type of events because um, that's what we need to make sure that these kids get what they, that they need. Um, so the start school is next week. Um, I'm, I'm already getting the phone calls um, concerning orientations and uh, uh, so parents, please, um, when you see that call that comes from the school, um, listen to the, listen to it because there's some valuable information in there. Um, it, it always, when that, when I get the call, it always says Forest High School because that's how it was programmed and when my sons was at Forest. So it always says Forest High School. And then it's, it's ironic, it says Forest High School, but it's Mr. Carlisle's voice that always comes on. Cause it was the Vanguard. So um, so parents, please listen. Um, I know there's gonna be some orientations, I think, starting next week and the following week. Um, just pay attention, get the information or go onto the website and make sure we get that as well. Um, and, and finally, um, I, I want to commend um, Ms. Beck, Jennifer Beck, um, as she is our Director for the Fordham Learning Academy, Early Learning Academy. And she um, as you guys know, that um, that academy has a, a special place in my heart as well as my fraternity's heart. As um, Mr. Fordham um, is one of our, our fraternity members and was my um, elementary school principal sadly. To say Mr. Fordham passed away last Tuesday morning. And um, so it's, it is um, the school being named in his honor. He knew the na, he knew the school had been named in his honor. And his family is extremely excited about it. Um, we'll be having his funeral next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And um, and one of the things that we are doing um, is as a fraternity, we've been supporting um, Ms. Beck. Um, I, I wanna read the email. Um, and I hope she don't mind me reading it. But she sent an email because um, some of us, some of us, some of us in the fraternity went out. She just says, and she sent to Mr. Jones, who's Assistant Principal here, who's a fraternity brother as well. Says, Mr. Jones, I wanna take a moment to extend my sincere appreciation for the help your fraternity offered to Fordham Early Learning Academy this past Saturday. The gentlemen that came were ready to pitch in and work wherever needed. Together, they power washed sidewalks, windows, and the playground. They removed weeds, laid five yards of mulch and blew off debris around the school. I don't think we left much before 1:30. I could never have accomplished all that without their help. I'm hosting a training for all VPK teachers on Monday at Fordham Early Learning and Academy. And now our campus looks so fresh and clean. Please let all the gentlemen know how thankful I am for their support and help. It meant the world to me and I'm very grateful. Many thanks, uh, Jennifer Beck, Director of Early Learning. We, and I'm not saying that to, to promote my fraternity, but I'm saying that because there's other organizations in the community that we need to partner with schools, that we need to do the same thing, that we need to step up the pace. Um, Fordham and NH Jones are our schools because they're named after members of our fraternity. However, um, we challenge any other fraternity, any other sorority, any other civic organization, any other, to get with those principals at those schools and to do the same thing. Um, if we want our kids and our, to do, be successful, we want our school district to be a better school district, then it's gonna take collaborations between the community, the schools, the families, the kids. It's gonna take all of that to build what we want it to be. So um, and, and again, and I'm, and thank you, Ms. King, for keep reminding us. And I pray that all of us would be saying the same thing every week when, every time we're talking, that it's not about um, all of the things that we keep hearing if we don't have positive student outcomes. We have to be focused on student outcomes. And that's, again, as I said, my focus is gonna be on student outcomes. I believe this board's and the superintendent's focus is on student outcomes. And I know that the teachers that are in the classroom, the, the bus drivers and everybody that's dealing with these kids hands-on every day, that the focus is student outcomes. So we're looking forward to the start of a new year. Um, looking forward to the beginning of a uh, new uh, school year. Again, I kiss, I say it all the time. It's a fresh start. Everybody has a 4.0 right now. Keep it. Don't lose it. Just maintain the 4.0. And if you, if, if you uh, if you work hard, you can. You can. Some kids have 5.0s. They didn't have that when I was at school. So uh, but 4.0s is keep that and let's maintain it. And let's have a great, great school year. So I end my comments with that. We don't have any expulsion matters. Hip, hip, hooray. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Board Member Thrower, second by Vice Chair Campbell. Meeting is adjourned. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at 12:08 PM.